Commission interviews. We're glad you're all here. If we get the city clerk to do the roll call.
Mayor Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Spring.
Yeah.
neighbors.
Here.
Borjoli and Martinez Beltran. Councilmember Borjoli is here. He just stepped away from it.
Okay, very good. Would you please declare the posting of the agenda?
Tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with government code 54954.2.
Yeah, thank you. Please join us for a silent invocation as we all stand. All right, you would join us in the pledge of allegiance as well.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we're going to now get into the interviews here. Again, we have, what we're looking to do is fill the seats on both the Library Culture and Arts Commission, as well as the Parks and Recreation Commissions. And so as we get started, a couple of things that I'd like to do, first of all, is just sort of talk to each of those, the candidates, if you will, about some of the things we look for in those who would be serving in our commissions. Number one, that's a commitment to public service. This is all about the public. And so we've got to make sure that you're committed to that service, committed to our community, and committed to the things that we would need to do in these roles. So that's number one. Number two, commitment to collaboration, a willingness to work together and to work with others in our community is very important. Number three, commitment to ethical conduct. We need to avoid conflict of interest, and we need to make decisions that are best for our community, not just for ourselves. And then number four, commitment to educating yourselves on the issues and items that come before you as commissioners. And number five, a commitment to being prepared for the meetings. And that's where the extra homework comes in, getting ready, getting prepared, again, educating yourself, and doing what's necessary in order to provide the proper input in these types of meetings. The decisions you make, of course, will affect our community at large, and so it's important to be prepared for those meetings. So with that, as we get started, I would like to have the council consider what we're looking to do is reappointing Commissioners Suman Gonopathy, Amanda Santiago, and Jake Thompson to the Library Culture and Arts Commission. And then we'd like to appoint Commissioner Punam Chabra to the Parks and Recreation Commission. These appointments typically are done, they're mayoral appointments, but we really get input from our council members. And then based on those recommendations, I would make those appointments. And so I would like to ask the council to consider what I just said regarding those appointments. And if there is approval on that, I would seek a motion to approve the recommendation.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember River, seconded by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
With that being the case, based on that recommendation and input from the council members, I will reappoint the Commissioners Suman Gonopathy, Amanda Santiago, and Jake Thompson to the Library Culture and Arts Commission, with their terms ending April 1st, 2028. And we will appoint Commissioner Punam Chabra to the Parks and Recreation Commission, currently on LCAC, with a term ending April 1st, 2028. We will now go into interviews for the remaining two seats on the LCAC and on the Parks and Recreation Commission. So I'll turn it over to Michelle, if you would. Take it from here.
I'm gonna jump into interviews, and we're gonna start with our Library Culture and Arts Commission applicants. And so we will call you up one at a time. You will interview before council and have a seat. We will go through the interviews. Council has a tally sheet, so they will make their votes. And then before you leave this evening, we'll announce the appointments. And so... Mayor, is it, do you have Robin on the top of your list?
I do, yes.
Okay, perfect. So Robin Corio, if you don't mind coming up to the lectern up here, I'm gonna start with you. Mic is on. Feel free to adjust it however is comfortable.
Terrific. Thank you. Thanks for helping. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm just gonna, I thought I was gonna answer questions, so I'm just gonna tell you what...
Also, you can also prepare yourself, and then we'll ask questions.
Absolutely. I do have a background in arts and culture. I have a degree in art history. I'm also an artist myself, a photographer. I've had shows in New York and in San Francisco. This was a while ago. And then after that, I decided I wanted to go back to school to get my degree. So first, I was actually an active artist, involved in the community. I would do mural tours in San Francisco for Perseida Eyes, and then I decided I wanted to go back to school and get my degree. So I have a degree in art history and visual culture from the UC Santa Cruz Department of Art and History. And since then, I've, I got married and had a child and homeschooled him. But my kind of transferable skills to this, to this position would be that I was kind of a big organizer within the homeschool community. I would organize events for children. I organized a co-op where we taught Latin, art, art history, English, literature. And I did that for a couple of years as well. So I'm very, very passionate about the arts. And on top of that, making sure art is part of our public dialogue, art installations, public art, public spaces. I do have a lot of ideas regarding becoming part of this commission, but I also am happy to implement other people's ideas. And I think that's my strength. If someone will give me an idea or a task, and I will, you know, see it all the way to the finish. And I think that's really important when you're part of a group of community members in that commission.
Very good.
Yeah, that's my background.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Okay, good.
Any questions?
No, excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, good evening, Robin. It's good to see you. The, I assume you've been in Morgan Hill for a long time. I know that. And you're familiar with the Library Culture and Arts Commission and what they're doing. You know, it's Morgan Hill's best paid job. But it's on commission, but also Amanda's really, that does a lot of work for the community. I'm extremely impressed by what this commission has been doing over the past few years. But if you had to pick one or two things, what do you think is not happening yet? What would you like to see that this commission would be doing? And again, it's the Library Culture and Arts Commission.
Right. I've seen a lot of great things. I've, you know, I've been part of the library for a very long time. I've, you know, owed them a lot of money. Finally got that paid off, so I'm in the clear. But we, you know, we frequented the library so many times since my son was two. And yes, I've been here about 14 years in Morgan Hill. And since that time, I've seen an increase in events, you know, kind of events that attempt to like increase the cultural diversity in our community, which I really like. Bringing women, bringing, you know, filmmakers, bringing activities for kids, activities for seniors. And I think that's really important. So that's something I've seen. I've seen them bring the art studio, you know, the studio tours to the community, just very, very active. And it's almost hard to find something, but I did kind of think about that myself. And what I, I think would be interesting is something that San Jose is doing. It's called San Jose Create. And it's something that involves the community heavily. It's mostly virtual, but I think we can also bring it to a physical event as well. So what people are doing is they have like an activity or a type of art that they present to the community. And they say, okay, so create it, and then take a photograph of it, put it online, and then it kind of documents all of that, and everybody can look at everybody's art and comment. I think they can comment, I'm not sure. But I like that. I like being able to engage the community. So I think they're already doing it, but I think there can always be something more to that. Another event or kind of type of public art that I thought was pretty great. This is in San Francisco. It's called Bay Area Creative. And my son, he's a pianist, and he entered it and got a little scholarship from them. And so what they do is they, it's for the youth, and you just kind of reach out to everybody, and it's all, it's BAPA. So it's visual arts, you know, and also performing arts, everything. So everybody, they apply, they submit their, their art, whether it be poetry, spoken word, dance, music. And it's such a great variety, and it's really fun to watch online. And then the event coordinator just pick a few people to, but actually, it's more like a competition as well. But then they have this big, huge event at the end of the season, and it highlights the winners and also highlights the runners-up. So something like that to just really engage the public. And I know that's what you're about. So I think I could bring a lot of that to this position. So I hope that answers.
It doesn't actually. I like your, if I might, I like your thought of doing more, of bringing more art to our community virtually as well. Also considering that not everyone is as mobile as maybe you and I, right? And there's probably an opportunity there. So thank you for sharing your thoughts.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. I have no questions. So, Michelle?
Thank you. And I'm not a public speaker, so I hope that doesn't...
No, you're great. Thanks.
That's not a requirement of the job.
Fine.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Jody Austin. Who does not appear to be here at the moment, so we will move on to Chelsea. Okay.
Boy, this could be an easy vote.
So then we'll move over to our PRC applicants. We have Said. Perfect. Come on up. Feel free to adjust the mic however is comfortable. And so just to be clear, Said is applied for Parks and Recreation Commission.
Yes. Okay, that's what we're talking about today.
The questions we're gonna ask you is about art, so be ready.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor, and members of our council. My name is Said Zagar. This is my first time also public speaking, so you'll have to excuse me a little bit. And so I guess I'll talk to you about who I am and why I'm here. Yeah, this would be of interest to you. So my family and I moved to Morgan Hill about three years ago, and we, we love, we love this community. I mean, simply put, right? So we have three young, beautiful children, under five years old. And so now our oldest son is in the Unified School District. We were local to Paradise Parks. We frequent our parks, which is why, one of the main reasons I'm here. My family and I really understand and value the sense of community that they bring, whether it be our local playgrounds, with my kids love Magical Bridges and Paradise Valley, but also our open spaces. You know, just today, actually, just a quick, quick little story. I was riding my bike down the new bike path that stretches down toward San Martin. And out there, there is a Lake Silvera, it's an old quarry, as you might recall, which is now a habitat. It was, first of all, it's, it's a very open trail. No one's out there during the day. So I think that, by the way, we can maybe increase awareness of this beautiful place that we've, we've put a lot of work into. And I was struck by just, just the beauty, the sound, what we have been done, what has been done in terms of rehabilitation. It's really a special place. And so when I see a place like that, and I think about, you know, my love of Morgan Hill, I want to bring that to, to our residents. I wanna think about places we can improve it for accessibility. You know, I sure would have loved perhaps a bench out there to really take in what I was seeing and hearing. You know, you think about mental health, right? Gee, connecting with nature, and we have it all around us, as well as just, just beautiful walkways, is really important. So this is the type of area that I think I can maybe help explore and help implement. So once again, why I'm here is I just want to be involved with our community. I think I have good ideas, and I want to work with you all and our community themselves, and see what we can do to make Morgan Hill even better, as far as parks and recreation. So with that, just want to open to your questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, please.
I don't know much.
There.
You know, I have some questions of my own, and I'm glad you brought that up. And if you don't mind, you know, yes, I do work. My wife and I work, we have three young children, as I mentioned. But we, we can, we can handle quite a bit. But I would like to hear from any of you all, kind of, you know, what you're looking for. You know, see if this is a good match.
Oh, good.
This is an interview after all, right?
Yeah, very good.
Very good. I actually was a Parks and Recs Commissioner for six years before I became elected to City Council. So I know it, you know, it's up close and personal for me. So, yeah, it's a great commission. I believe they all are, but this one's, like I said, close to me. It sounds like you have the enthusiasm, some fresh ideas, and that's what we're looking for. So I appreciate you applying.
Well, sure. It's my pleasure to apply. In terms of commitment, though, what, what, what is the commitment?
Well, there's one.
How often are we meeting?
Yeah, one time a month in the evening.
Once a month?
Once a month.
Yes.
But then there's other activities that you can volunteer to be involved in.
Okay.
So, I mean, depending, like, if it's at a park, or if it's at a statue that's being dedicated, we'd hope you'd be there to, you know, cheer us on as we cut the ribbon, that kind of stuff.
Yes, of course.
So, but besides that, that's about it. There's this prep work. You'll get an agenda ahead of time. Takes you probably an hour and a half, maybe, to read, and you have time to, you get early enough, days-wise, that you can ask questions of the staff member who would be directing this commission. So you can get answers, and...
Oh, that, that sounds perfect. That sounds no problem whatsoever, councilmember.
That's about it for all commissions, except for planning, which is much more intense.
But that, that sounds exciting. And I know we do a great job with the Veterans Day Memorial downtown.
Uh-huh, yeah.
If, if, if that's what you're talking about, yes, I'm already there anyway.
The deer that are also downtown, a little further.
Yeah, awesome. Wonderful. Understand.
Okay.
It's great. Thank you.
Well, from my perspective, I, what I'm looking for is, just like you had mentioned, these benches along those pathways. Obviously, water district property that we'd have to be connected to. But it's those types of ideas that I'd like to see brought forward. You know anything about dwarf cherry blossom trees?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that path lined with them. But it's those kinds of things, new, fresh ideas. Somebody, somebody, you know, we want to make sure that our Parks and Recreation Committee is fighting for, for keeping our parks vibrant.
Yeah.
And I mean, we can even incorporate, you know, we can incorporate public art into playgrounds and other things. And so those types of collaborations are also important.
That's a great suggestion, Mayor. I mean, to, to work with the Arts Commission as well, to incorporate our local artists, you know, get their works out. I think we'd do a lot of things. Not only support the artists themselves, but increase accessibility and just bring people out to our parks, because, you know, it's funny. Just today, something happened, like the stars aligned, even though the stars weren't out, so to speak. It just was like this, like, not emotion, but it was just a wave of senses, because it's kind of quiet out there. And I said, gee, you know, I think a lot of people, if they knew about it, per se, I don't know, feel like it's brand new, right? I mean, it's only been open for several months, like Crosswalk over there by Watsonville Road. Really special place. So let's put more of those, you know, let's, let's think about how we can make them.
Yeah, indeed. Councilmember Spring?
Yeah. Thank, thank, thank you. Nice meeting you, and thank you for applying. Even though I live northwest of town, I walk from there to the trail that you mentioned. And you have to pick a side at some point, because there's no bridge yet. Unless you, unless you do what we do, and you go up and walk the other side. And on the other side, there actually are benches, if you know where they are. So, so I'm a trail expert in this town who walk a lot. But, but I, what I'm looking for is really for, for diversity in our commissions, right? For some of the commissioners have been on the commission for a long time. So I always look for new members, really to kind of shake up a little bit, the, what's being discussed, and bring in new ideas, and question what the way things have been doing.
Right, right.
You know, just because something has been done for 20 years doesn't mean it's still okay to do it that way, right? At the end of the day, and I used to be a planning commissioner for several years, the commissioner advised reports to the council, right, at the end of the day. So, so you are advising us on making recommendations, and helping to spend the little amount of money we have.
Yeah.
And it's less and less money, because we have, we don't have our residential growth control system anymore that used to help fund parks.
Yeah.
And of course, I look for commissioners that believe in diversity and look at parks and recreation activities also through the lens of those who struggle, who are not as mobile, or maybe can't see or can't hear, right? That's why I love, and I was a huge fan from day one of the Magical Bridge Park idea. I think this is one of the highlights we have in our city. But I think every park should, should be looked through the lens of those who are not as mobile as you and I, right? And then they'll have other challenges, and then, but they can't speak for themselves, right? So they need the commissioners to, to advocate for them. So if, if, if I were to ask your kids, what are they missing, what would they tell me?
What's the question to my kids?
Your kids, yes.
What's the question?
What would they be missing? What, what, what would they say? Hey Daddy, why don't we have this or this?
Apple parks?
Yes.
Okay. So they, they do visit Magical Bridges quite often, and the Rover Park. Think about that. So, you know, there's sound with the instruments, and there's movement. You know, I'll have to think about that a little bit longer, but what we try to do, incorporate with for them, is engaging their senses. So as long as parks can, you know, if we think about our parks to be a place where our community members can engage their senses, right? Their sight, or it, or, and/or, right? Their hearing, and so on and so forth. I think then the person can have a very fulfilling experience at the parks. And so in terms of my kids, geez, I don't know. It's okay. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff. You have to think about that. Right. You bring something up, though, Councilmember Spring, which I'm interested in, is that, you know, you talk about the member, how the folks of the, of the council have been there for, for some years, and they look for fresh ideas. How many members are in this, in this commission?
Seven?
Yes. Seven, yeah. Okay. Okay. And, you know, who, who do we work with regularly?
Said, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let's make sure the interview is going your way. We can get, we can gather the interviews. You can get the information that you're asking. So I want to try to keep us on track as well, as far as time is concerned. So are there any other questions by council here? Any more?
Let's get to it.
Councilmember Borjoli?
I don't know. We're under a time limit.
Well, we just, well, we were trying to shoot for our regular meeting beginning at six, and I want to make sure we have enough time for all the other candidates. No, no worries.
First of all, I apologize for my lateness. So hopefully you'll excuse me. Welcome. In, in your writing to us, what would you like to accomplish as a commissioner? You wrote, advocate for funding and grants to support sustainable projects. Could you elaborate a little bit on that? And if you did answer the question previously, then you don't have to answer it again.
Sure. I've not addressed it. That question, I'll address it now, councilmember. So I guess this might go back to the question for Councilmember Spring, what's missing? Well, you know, let's take a hard look at our parks and see if, if there's a way to improve it. Then we should allocate funds for it, or write grants for them, apply for them. And there'd be infrastructure, say bathrooms, or maybe water stations, or just new playground equipment, or benches, things like that. I mean, or cleanup even, right? There's obviously the natural, you know, rain and all that kind of stuff that causes damage to the very trails that, that we frequent, you and I. So, you know, things like that, we should make sure we're taken care of.
But how would you do that, though? I mean, what's some of the ways that you would reach out to whomever and try and accomplish that?
I work with our government to see if there's special grants out there that we can apply for. I'm new to this council, council member. So, you know, we talked about collaboration, and we talked about senior members of the council. I mean, yeah, I figured there's gotta be some funding out there that we can maybe, maybe tap into, or donors.
Thank you, Said.
Sure thing.
Very good. So no other questions? We will, any other questions? Thank you, Said. Great interview. We'd like to turn it back over to Michelle.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Said. And our next applicant will be, is it Tanaya? Tanaya, if you could come on up?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Tanaya Rose. I've been a Morgan Hill resident for 21 years. My husband here is, Chris is with me here tonight. Our son graduated from Ancevarado High School, and he was also a member of Yak in his senior year. We pick him up in just a couple of weeks from his first year of college. So while we've been here in Morgan Hill, we've seen so many of the changes and so much growth with all of the recreation facilities, and we have used all of them since we've been here. Many of them weren't even here when we first moved in. I'm a Morgan Hill volunteer with the Magical Bridge Playground. I've been a volunteer with them for two years now. So you'll find me out there on Saturday mornings, picking up trash and doing maintenance at the park, working with maintenance on any types of issues that we see. You know, you walk the fence and make sure that there are not panels coming down. I'm also a member of Leadership Morgan Hill, class of 2024, best class ever. And we'll be presenting a little later tonight on some of our project plans for the CCC. So really, my involvement these last two years is what brought me here tonight. I thought about this commission two years ago, and I knew I didn't really have the time for it. I had been part of volunteering and fundraising for Magical Bridge for several years, and I really got a sense of how difficult it is to build one park. And the past two years volunteering there, I've gotten a very good understanding of how difficult it is to maintain a popular park on that same level it was the first day it's opened. And so what brought me here now is that I had the time, and I've spent these two years working with the city and working with other volunteers, and really just sort of falling in love with the work and the community itself. Service is very important to me. I've been a law enforcement officer for 22 years. And so giving back to my community and serving the community is sort of a part and parcel of who I am. So that's just a little bit about me.
Very good. Thank you, Tanaya. Any questions? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, thank you so much for applying, and it's good to see you again. I, I just disagree, the class of 2020, well, was the best one in lead.
I'll have to say it.
Said, my colleague and former classmate agrees with me. So I'm glad you're, you're engaged. I love what you do for the Magical Bridge Park and volunteer. That park only can live if we have people like you volunteering. So, so really thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing that. We, you know, even though I'm slowly on my way out of this seat here, as you probably know, I, I still dream, right? And one of my dreams is to have these commissioners of that commission going into, kind of to do day trips into all our neighborhoods across town to see what parks are out there, what do they need, maybe work with the HOH there if the park is owned, or go into neighborhoods where there's nothing, to understand what they could need, right? To really become this council's eyes and ears into the neighborhood, so that we don't just build and improve parks in the same areas only, and really understand where are great gaps, right? Or maybe parks that need some TLC and so on. And I'm sure you, you would find them if you only were to go out. What do you think about that idea?
I love it. I've seen all of the community... I love it. I've seen all of the community events we have at the Magical Bridge Playground, bringing the community there to the park. And oftentimes, people have never been to the park before. And they came for the event, and then they find out about this park, and they ask, how long has it been here? And I'll tell them almost two years, and they're surprised by that. So really leveraging the other parks in the city, having some of our city events at those parks, bringing the community to these different areas so they can see just the richness of all the parks that we have. I think it's going to engage the community more. I see them here when they come to Magical Bridge. I see them when they're at our CCC. And once they see what's available, it is interesting how little sometimes people know about all of the wonderful parks and wonderful services we have. And I think having events at these parks might be a less expensive way than marketing or outreach or pamphlets or mailers, just having the events there that attract the families is a really good way to highlight our parks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Councilmember Borjoli?
Thank you, Mayor. Um in your uh what would you like to accomplish as a commissioner? Um you indicated you will help to support future innovative proposals that improve the lives of our citizens. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on that?
Well, so having been at the park, I would look back to when the park was being built, and sometimes I would, you know, email Chris Gianni, or I'd email my ideas and say, why isn't this being done? And then you're there and you get educated, right? And I think definitely we're entering kind of a difficult budgetary cycle. And so I know we have that six-year plan, and as a commissioner, we want to support that six-year CIP plan, but also some innovative ways to get funds for these parks even when things are difficult and maintaining those parks. And one idea I had, I know we have this great Adopt a Park program, but I look at the library, uh Friends of the Morgan Hill Library, that's been strong for fifty years. And I look at Friends of the Senior Center that is building up an endowment for more difficult times. And I think maybe we could take that Adopt the Park program, Adopt the Tree program. And can we make it something more robust? Can we make it a five oh one C three? Can we make it an endowment? Can we make it something that people can contribute monthly to, recurring donations? And have more of an emergency fund for these innovative type of parks. Magical Bridge is a great example of that sort of innovative, inclusive park, all ages, all abilities. And so as we look at new parks coming into the area, not only do we want parks that are going to serve the the largest number of residents and give us most acreage, we also want to make sure that we're including these innovative ideas. How are the grounds? If we're using bark or we're using rubber tires, that's not accessible to people in wheelchairs. That's not accessible to mobility issues. What structures are we putting in? So I think we can take all of the really special elements that we have at Magical Bridge and make sure that as we build parks and as we build the community, we add these innovations in. One thing I saw recently at uh another park in Palo Alto, Magical Bridge, they just um put out this tactile map. And so it's for visually impaired residents, and it is a bronze map of the park itself, where you can feel the different structures. They have Braille. It even has a wand that will actually speak and tell you about the park. Those little ideas that I'd never seen that in a park before. As we build that and as we build things, keeping those things in mind, I think it's really going to help bring the community together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? No other questions. Michelle? Thank you, Tanaya.
Thank you, Tanaya. Um has anybody else arrived to interview that has not yet interviewed? I don't think so. Okay. So we do have Tara Bevington, who um anticipating a full roster of applicants, is on her way from work and was going to be our last interview. Um at this point, Christine Burington did email us and let us know that she was ill and could not make it. We sent her a Zoom link and we didn't hear back from her, so hopefully she's resting. Um and Jody Austin and Chelsea Gonzalez were no-shows. So at this point, we have one applicant to um one applicant for LCAC, and there are two seats to fill. So Robyn Correa is the one applicant we've interviewed for LCAC. And for PRC, we have two seats, and we have interviewed Said and and Tanaya. Um so Mayor, we could take a recess, um give Tara an opportunity to arrive if you'd like. Alternatively, council could uh mark your tallies down and make your decision and and.
Tara given indication as to when she could be here?
She was going to do her best to be here by like five forty-five. We so we told her we'd make her the last interview because with, you know, seven people to interview, that should have been just fine.
Right. I would suggest we wait till five forty-five. If she's not arrived by that time, we we move on.
Okay, so we'll take a fifteen-minute recess?
With that? You guys okay?
And twelve-minute recess? Okay.
Yep, if you don't mind, ladies and gentlemen, sorry for the delay, but we just think it might be the fairest uh way to approach this. So thank you for being patient with us. Ten-minute break, yeah. Thank you.
With regards, and this is obviously very simple for us here with regards to the Calgary Culture and Arts Commission, congratulations, Robin. You are going to be a member of the LCAC Commission. I will tell you it was a very difficult vote, but glad that you're interested, glad that you're going to be a part of the Commission. Thank you for your commitment and service to our community. And then for the Parks and Recreation Commission, again, another tough vote, but we are going to say congratulations to Said and to Tanaya for your appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So thank you for your commitment and dedication to our community as well. Thank you all so very much. Now, the next meeting begins at six, so we do have a break here for another 10 minutes. And so you're all welcome to stay through the entire meeting and join us all through 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock tonight, or you can do what you would like. But yes, yes, indeed. Thank you all very much. We're going to take a break and we'll start again at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Was it on earlier? It is now. Good evening, everybody. At 6 o'clock, we're going to get the regular meeting started. We have already called the meeting to order. We're now convening our regular meeting. And we do have some presentations by our Youth Action Council, and we're going to ask them to come forward and make their presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, council members, city manager, city attorney, city teammates, and our community members. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are excited to be back to present to you all. Before we present, we would like to introduce ourselves. My name is Daniel Diaz. This is my first year in Yak, and I'm one of the co-vice presidents. As well as that, I'm a junior at Gilroy High.
Hello, I'm Connor Posgro. This is my second year in Yak. I am a secretary, and I attend Buttonman College Preparatory as a freshman.
Very good. Welcome. Thank you, guys. We are here today to present to you about this month's developmental asset, which is a stretch. This month's developmental asset, which is service to others. Young person serves in community for one hour or more per week. And this is important because our community molds us into who we are. The complementary asset that quickly showcases the developmental asset for this month is experienced developmental relationships. I'd like to share about my own experience with communities. Prior to my admission into the Youth Action Council, I would not contribute much in the communities I lived in prior in Morgan Hill and present in Gilroy. Because of this, I felt that there was a rift between who I am and the communities I resonated with. This would all change last year when I attended the Youth Action Council's summer program, O M H, or in other terms, Youth Leadership Morgan Hill. During this action, I was able to take my first step into community service and be able to be admitted into the Youth Action Council. This involvement had started with Yak, then branch out later on to joining more clubs, such as the Morgan Hill Youth Climate Action Team. Because of this experience I had shared with Yak and the community, I felt I was making progressive admissions. Because of these actions of branching out and continued service, I felt I was affecting community in a beneficial way, and my actions were being put towards a great effort. This should all only be possible, though, because of our club advisor, Cheeky, for continued support, dedication, and commitment towards Yak.
Thank you, Daniel. I would also like to share a personal story. When I was growing up, I would always feel happy making other people feel good about themselves by giving them compliments or making them laugh. When I was young, I would always feel awkward if someone wasn't happy, so I'd do as much as I can to make them feel better. For example, when I was young, my friend was struggling with homework, so I spent a lot of time working with him just to see him relieved and happy, which made me feel accomplished. This could also be seen during the 50-plus year Yak holds every year. What's me showcase, care towards our guests, and seeing them on the dance floor makes me happy. Because I contributed this by setting up the event and throwing 100 balloons just to see smiles on their faces. As long as I could help make people feel happy and enjoy the time they have, it always puts a smile on my face. When I joined Yak, it opened me up to the community, and by opening me up to the community, I could do a lot more. I could do like community service, running events, and et cetera. With the community and seeing everyone so happy brings me joy, which makes me want to feel more involved with the community.
I believe that all of us have contributed in the community in some way that has molded us into who we are. I'd like to conclude this with a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. stated, "Everyone can be great because everyone can serve." Thank you for your time and for giving us the opportunity to share how communities have shaped us. Good evening.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Connor. And I want to say thank you to Cheeky as well. Thank you for, Daniel, I think you've mentioned her by name. Cheeky, you do a great job. You've been doing this for a long time. We appreciate your investment in our youth. Thank you. We have some recognitions and some proclamations, so I'm going to step down to the front podium here. Spirit recognition is for Albin Diaz. Is Albin here? Albin, come on over. Albin, the city of Morgan Hill recognizes Albin Diaz for his 18 years of work serving the youth of Morgan Hill. Albin's work at El Toro Youth Center and subsequently at El Toro Boys and Girls Clubhouse has helped transform the lives of hundreds of Morgan Hill youth. Albin has repeatedly gone above and beyond to support our community, never hesitating to put the needs of the youth in his program above his own. So we'd like to present this proclamation to you. Do you have any words you'd like to share?
No, I started working there when I was 18. I'm 36, and during that time, he helped me more than I helped kids, thousands of kids, hundreds of kids, which is crazy because every time I go somewhere, it's either like somebody like, "Oh, I know you from somewhere." And I'm like, "I don't know who you are." But yeah, it's been really neat serving Morgan Hill, so thank you very much.
And here you go. And Albin, working for the Boys and Girls Club has also just recently received a promotion and taken on more responsibility. And so thank you for your investment in our community. Thank you. This was a proclamation. The month of March 2024 is Red Cross Month, and so we have a couple of individuals who will be receiving this. Dr. Liz Dietz and Tom Tanner to receive this. During American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Morgan Hill and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. This generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of the Red Cross. Co-founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. The American Red Cross depends on local heroes to deliver help and hope during a disaster. We applaud our heroes here in our community who give of themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need and ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Can I say a few words?
I would definitely like to say a few words. I am Liz Dietz. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Silicon Valley chapter. I have been a volunteer for 44 years, and I'm a registered mayor for 55 years. I do disaster health services along with being disability integration. My colleague to the right, Tom Tanner, takes care of government ops and other good things like that and talking to elected officials. The gentleman over there, sitting over there, who's only been my partner 54 years, we're married, Larry Dietz does public affairs. The reason I keep him around, I want to know who he's having these affairs with. The reason I keep him around, I want to know who he's having these affairs with.
Public.
Yeah, very public, yes. We are very pleased to be here and to receive this proclamation. We have approximately eight paid employees, and there are fifteen hundred volunteers for Santa Clara County, for our Silicon Valley. And we are desperately looking for other volunteers, both in Morgan Hill and in Gilroy. We have multiple activities and a lot of fun, because if you don't have fun, then you, you don't want to do that. Even in the midst of disasters, and sometimes I'm sure you've had, you've used had that through your professional career. I thank you very much, and I thank you folks for providing us with this proclamation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you both so much.
Yes, picture?
Yes, that's public affairs.
Okay, all right, yes. Here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. It's like my wife. She's my security driver and photographer, so I get it. And if you can't give your time, be sure to give your blood, right? This next proclamation, thank you. The next proclamation is the, uh, this is for the Morgan Hill Youth Climate Action Team. Uh, the environmental health of the planet continues to be a priority for the city of Morgan Hill. Enhancing and improving our green opportunities where possible is an important component in the future development of our community. This obligation extends not only to today's caretakers, but also to future generations who inherit our planet. The city of Morgan Hill is committed to building on the successes we have achieved so far and looks to, to support this issue of environmental protection for years to come. Anything to say?
Yes, yeah, thank you so much to Mr. Mayor and to all the council members. We're so honored to be here today. My name is Sofiarius McGinty. I'm a junior at Live Oak, and I've been a part of this amazing organization since my freshman year. Um, and it's really amazing how it empowers youth in our community to take an active role, to make change that they can actually see, like at a city level. Uh, we helped make the Climate Action Plan back in twenty nineteen that was passed, and since then, we've had the honor of like seeing all these amazing changes being made. And, yeah, we vow to continue fighting to make this community more sustainable and protecting this beautiful planet. So thank you so much.
Um, hi, I'm Kythi. I'm the other co-lead of Morgan Hill's Youth Climate Action Team. I'm also a junior. Um, I've been part of this team for like about two years now, and it's really amazing to see all the changes that we can make on a city level in terms of like environmental, um, like, um, environmental policy and like all the things we really want to do for the world. Um, yeah, it's really great how empowered that like our team has felt in the past year.
Um, hi, my name is George. I've been part of this for like two years as well, and I'm, uh, the publicist. And it's just really cool to see, like, high school students like me being interested in wanting to make a change in the city, and it's really uplifting to see that. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Are we gonna do a selfie?
Oh.
Oh, so, okay, no, just, I see you. Just keep dancing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next proclamation is proclaiming April fourteenth through to twentieth, twenty twenty-four as Public Safety Telecommuters Week. Public Safety Dispatch Supervisor Adalia Young. I want to try to.
Give somebody a step.
Perfect. And you are?
Um, Kathleen.
Kathleen. Much easier name to pronounce. Thank you. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. The safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Morgan Hill's Police Department's Emergency Communications Center. Public Safety Dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public Safety Dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public Safety Dispatchers of the Morgan Hill Police Department have contributed substantially to calming callers in distress, helping thousands of people in difficult situations, and assisting with apprehensions of criminals, and for that, we thank you. Any, any words?
Uh, sure. Um, so this is actually my day one of training. Um, so I'm brand new. Um, they sent me here to, um, to represent the police department. So on behalf of Morgan Hill Dispatch and Police Department, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, city council members for this proclamation. Uh, we're very happy and excited about it. Um, and like I said, this is day one of my training, so I'm excited to start my career in dispatch and serve the city of Morgan Hill, help keep the community safe. Um, I used to live in Morgan Hill actually for eight years. My parents still live here, so I still have a link to the city. Um, and I love it out here, so I'm just excited to help serve the community in a, uh, more positive way. And like I said, help keep the community safe. Um, and once again, on behalf of Morgan Hill Dispatch and the Police Department, uh, we thank everyone for this proclamation.
You did that in very allman professional voice as well, so thank you. You're gonna do great at the, anybody taking pictures? What do you mean, the chief? Come on, chief. Both of us, our first day of training.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Someone is proclaiming the month of May two thousand twenty-four as Older Americans Month. That's all of us older Americans. Let's hear it. Uh, the city of Morgan Hill includes over five thousand citizens ages sixty and older. Oh, man, I just missed it. The city of, I'm just joking, City of Morgan Hill includes, yeah, I said that already. The Centennial Recreation Center is committed to valuing all individuals and recognizing their ongoing life achievements. The older adults in Morgan Hill play an important role by continuing to contribute experience, knowledge, wisdom, and accomplishments. Older adults are active community members involved in volunteering, mentorship, arts and culture, and civic engagement. Recognizing the success of older adults in our community encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments. Tell us your, you are Anna.
Hi, Anna. Hi, I'm Anna Bilecki. I oversee the senior center here in town, and so I want to thank you very much for the proclamation. And I would really like to, um, give a special thank you to our senior advisory committee. For those of you who don't know, they are a very dedicated, um, group of volunteers uh, who assist us in, in making sure that we can give back to our seniors in our community. And especially a group called the Friends of the Morgan Hill Senior Center. Um, they put on bingo every Tuesday at this community and cultural center, if you want to go play. And all of that money comes back to us to help fund, uh, the programming at the senior center. So we could not do what, what we do without them. And then finally, um, we have a dedicated group of volunteers that we are extremely grateful for. Many of them are seniors themselves, and, um, they give generously of their time so that we can provide really an amazing amount of services. Um, so also, if you want to stop by the senior center anytime and say hi, it's a really awesome place. And we are having a resource fair, a community resource fair on May eighteenth. Um, that is for families, seniors, adults, you name it, and it's gonna be here on, or, um, sorry, at the CCC on the lawn. We'd love to see you there. Thank you so much.
There you go. Thank you. And our last one is proclaiming the month of May two thousand twenty-four as National Water Safety Month. Molly Fitro. Citizens of Morgan Hill recognize the vital role that swimming and aquatic-related activities relate to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people. Citizens of Morgan Hill understand the essential role that the education regarding the topic of water safety plays in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries. The city acknowledges the contributions of other community organizations that provide aquatic services for Morgan Hill residents. Thousands of individuals have learned the life skill of swimming at the Morgan Hill Aquatic Center and Centennial Recreation Center. The Aquatic Center will open its summer swim season on Saturday, June eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Any words?
Thank you. Hi, Molly oversees aquatics for the city of Morgan Hill. Um, the countdown for summer has officially began, so we are looking for swim instructors and lifeguards. So if you know anyone interested, we are hiring and teaching classes. Um, we hope to see you all Saturday, June eighth, for rec swim. And most importantly, don't forget to just keep swimming in order to keep water safety up.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going into our city council reports, and we are going to turn it over to Mayor Protem Lubbers.
Good evening, Emma. On March twenty-first, I had the privilege of going to a conference down in Burbank, California, through the League of California Cities. Uh, my main responsibility on the policy committee down there is transportation, public works, but most of the day was spent on transportation. Uh, we have a problem with transportation, especially commute here in Morgan Hill. We're not alone. Almost every city that has a significant population has the same thing, so we dug deep into how we can correct that. I'm very happy to say we have received a grant. Um, I, city manager will probably talk about it a little bit more, but we'll help our, uh, commute traffic. And so it was very, uh, good experience and very knowledgeable for me because that's a new policy for me, so I was very happy to attend. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And now for our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the committee, and my teammates that are here, following on to Mayor Protem's report. Yes, we're very excited, and we put out a press release recently regarding some grants that we have received with the help of Congresswoman Zoe Loffren's office. Everything from grade separations to one-on-one expansion, quiet zones. Um, now, of course, um, not enough funding to do everything that we want, but of course, uh, any funds help, and so giving money towards one-on-one expansion will help us as we embark on this effort. Um, wanted to mention several other items this evening. Uh, first is budget development. So our team is, and the final touches on our budget document for the next two fiscal years. So mark your calendars for a couple dates. We have a community budget information booth on Saturday, May eleventh, from ten to three, and that's going to be part of the Saturdays, um, that we have downtown sidewalk Saturdays. And so our team will be there to answer questions and take input from the community. In addition, we will have a budget workshop on Wednesday, May twenty-second, here in the council chamber, and that's at six P M. One of the things I wanted to announce was that, uh, a solar app, and so we have a pilot program for solar permits that's underway, which means that contractors getting solar permits can acquire them through the automated solar app program. And this is as a result of a grant that we received and applied for. Um, and that was back in twenty twenty-three, and so online applications for all are expected to be available by summer. Mark your calendars for May thirty-first. We have an economic mobility symposium that's going to bring together diverse thought leaders exploring economic mobility with a specific emphasis tackling the barriers faced by Spanish-speaking community members and assessing housing, education, and career opportunities, as well as nurturing a feeling of inclusion on their path towards upward mobility. More information and the link to purchase tickets can be found on our website. We mentioned sidewalk Saturdays earlier as it relates to our budget, just to note that this is, uh, happening every Saturday, every second Saturday of the month, April through December, from ten to three. Uh, we had our last one just recently, includes a closure of Third Street, partial closure, uh, forty-five plus vendors, um, and as well as live music. This past weekend, Morgan Hill was alive and well with lots of activities. We had Earth Day, we had Santa Clara Valley Beautify, we had Rotary doing a project. One of the other things that we're very excited about is we had our indoor adaptive play program kickoff, and that was our first session over at the CRC. And so this program was a huge success with dozens of participants and several supporters. Um, so we want to thank the Morgan Hill Kiwanis Club that has supported the initiation of this project, uh, with five thousand dollars worth of equipment. And an additional thanks goes to the San Andreas Regional Center for Support, community member Enrique Flores for bringing the ideas forward and providing support, as well as community volunteer Sean and Tricia Parent for working to set up the program. And so this is for families with kids from about two to five with special needs that just need a, a more quiet, sensory-friendly environment indoors, and so that, we're excited about that Saturdays and Thursdays as well. Several other events I wanted to mention, uh, mark your calendars for May fourth, our, our La Carte. May eleventh, the Open Streets. May eighteenth, uh, is our Family Health and Wellness Fair, and so this is, um, really fun. I think this is the second annual, uh, ten to two, um, and so this is at the CCC with performances, health screenings, family resources, workshops, and more. And then on May twenty-second, we have Public Works Week event, and so we're going to be celebrating Public Works, uh, Week and a free event where you can meet our Public Works employees, see equipment demonstrations, and learn about the role public work professionals play in our everyday life. And then lastly, for events, uh, May thirty-first, um, at six o'clock here at the Civic Center Lawn, we will have our Pride Flag Raising Ceremony. All of these events and more can be found on our website as well as in our four-on-one. And then one final shout out, Robert, we'll appreciate this one as our photographer for the Panthers. The Panthers are not only our national champions from last year, but they're currently undefeated at four to zero. The next game is Sunday, April the twenty-eighth, and that will be in San Diego against the San Diego Strike Force.
I think that's Saturday.
Uh, according to the website, it's Sunday, April twenty-eighth.
Oh, very good. Okay.
Yeah, so.
Doing Sundays now.
With that, I conclude my report.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it seems like a long time ago, but on March sixth, the council met in closed session in a matter of Serna versus City of Morgan Hill. There was no report of action, and that's my report.
Very good. Thank you. Any other reports? I've got a couple, I'm sorry, do you have any? I've got a couple of things that, based on the committees that I serve on. First of all, I do would like to thank the Morgan Hill Rotary Club for this past Saturday. Uh, a group of volunteers from the Morgan Hill Rotary Club, uh, planted thirty trees, uh, in the, the community park near the Magical Bridge Park. So that, that took place. I served on the mobility partnership, and again, we've learning that the one-on-one twenty-five interchange, phase one, is fully funded, and that work is to begin, uh, slated to begin in early twenty twenty-five and should be completed by the end of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, again, for phase one. Also on V T A, V T A learned some information. V T A has ranked in the top five among the nation's largest transit, uh, transit agencies in ridership growth with twenty-five million riders aboard buses and light rail trains in two thousand twenty-three. The V T A board also decided to send a letter opposing S B ten thirty-one, which is a bill aiming at consolidating all of the, uh, transit operators in the Bay Area. Uh, they wanted to do that by twenty twenty-seven. S B ten thirty-one would also give, uh, a look, uh, to raise between seven hundred and fifty and two, seven hundred and fifty million dollars and two billion dollars through taxes. And so, uh, the, uh, V T A board chose to oppose that at this point in time. Now, train, since the adoption of the fourth train, uh, in South County, ridership has increased by thirty-eight percent, equaling an additional one hundred and thirty-eight daily trips. System-wide weekday ridership increased by twenty-six, uh, percent over that same period of time, so we did see some, an increase in ridership. I served on the Cities Association, and we received in our last meeting a presentation from the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, also called B A F A, uh, regarding a regional affordable housing bond they're looking to try to get on the ballot in November. Uh, this bond could raise up to twenty billion dollars also through taxes. Uh, they would, the idea is that they would build and preserve, uh, seventy-two thousand affordable housing units across nine counties. All the housing would be deed restricted, uh, and the, the bond could bring in, uh, for what it means for Santa Clara County is one to two billion dollars specifically for San Jose's efforts, and then an additional one point two to two point four billion to Santa Clara County. The county Board of Supervisors would decide where that money goes, but they could also decide out of that one point two to two point four billion, that would be set aside for the rest of the cities in Santa Clara County. Some of that money could also be allotted to go to San Jose in addition to what they already get. Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority, at our last meeting, we approved the budget, and each member agency will see increases in their contributions to the S B R I A due to funding, uh, the Asset Replacement Reserve to support strategic lifecycle, uh, lifecycle planning for their radio infrastructure, increased insurance premiums, and contractually agreed, contractually agreed to long-term service contracts, so we'll be seeing that. Uh, I just attended the League of California Cities, the City Leaders Conference in Sacramento. We have four advocacy priorities for two thousand twenty-four. It is number one, safeguard local revenues and bolster local economic development. Number two, strengthen climate change resiliency and disaster preparedness. Number three, improve public safety in California communities. And number four, expand investments to prevent and reduce. And number four, expand investments to prevent and reduce homelessness and increase the supply of affordable housing. And all through those three days we were there, there was a number of conversations and panels being, discussing all of these topics with different ideas and an opportunity to meet with state legislators to talk more about those, those issues. I've been working on something here called the, when I was in Gilroy as the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, I, I worked with Visit Gilroy to develop a trail, we called it the Taco Trail, to support and promote the 20-plus Mexican restaurants that we had in our community. And when I became mayor here, I thought there's got to be something we can do in our community, and I didn't want to duplicate the Taco Trail. I landed on the idea of a guacamole trail, which we will call the Guac Walk. And so worked, got in touch with Krista Rupp from Visit Morgan Hill, began working with her early in the process. I began visiting the Mexican restaurants here in town and asking if they would like to be a part of this, but also discovered I needed some help. And so I was able to get Maria Sanchez here in town and also Yori, Yori Carchado to go with me. They can speak Spanish and help communicate with some of these owners. And we have 15 Mexican restaurants, all 15 in our community that are on board, plus Legion Market. And so it is, we're going to call it the Guac Walk. And what we're thinking of also adding to that is July 31st is National Guacamole or National Avocado Day. And then there's also February's National Avocado Month. We thought, hey, we'll do a, we'll do a guacamole contest, and we'll call it the Guaca Fame. So we're just going to have some fun with this, and it's just a kind of a fun way of promoting, building our Mexican restaurants. And so I think Visit Morgan Hill will be actively involved in that promotion and process, and I don't know if the city will pick any of this up and help promote as well. But I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. We'll probably really get this going here the next week or two. It's, we'll circle back with all the restaurants and tell them, hey, we're, we're launching it. So this will be really a year-round promotion, just to get people, you know, to these restaurants to experience what's happening there and to bring more customers to those restaurants. So be on the lookout for that. And then, I don't know, Christina, have you mentioned the Mushroom Festival? May 25th and May 26th, be on the lookout for that as well. That is it for me. We will now go to public comment. This opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. And if you'd like to make comments on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the, on the agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during public comment are not generally answered. And if you have questions, please send them to the city clerk at ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. Do we have any public comments?
I have no cards, Mayor, and I don't see anybody coming up to speak.
Very good.
Oh, you can go right to that left turn right in front of you, and you might just need to push the button on the mic. Do you see a red light? Perfect.
No. Oh, thank you. I was impressed, and I was very happy to see the young children contributing to the community. I would just like to give my own reminder, respected committee. So it was a testament to our values that recently we supported Ukraine. I, I urge you to extend the same spirit to support the Palestinians who are facing a grave humanitarian crisis. Let's not forget that our biggest holiday in America is the celebration of a birthday of a Palestinian from the West Bank, Jesus Christ. And this holds a significant cultural and historic importance, not only to the Americans, but to the whole world. It was tragic and alarming, the destruction of the oldest church, the third oldest church in Gaza. And it's a very alarming reminder, so I humbly ask you to stand by honesty, equality, and justice for peace before decorating this year's Christmas tree. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Any other comments? Are being none?
No.
Okay, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. So moved. I got a motion by Councilmember Spring, seconded by Councilmember Borzioli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There being none. That passes 4-0. Now for the consent calendar, there, the council or anyone in the public is not looking to pull any items, then we will go ahead and take a motion to approve. Do we have anybody on the council looking to pull any items? There being none. Anyone in the public? There being none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Borzioli, seconded by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There being none. Passes 4-0. Now on to item 12, public hearing. Hold public hearing and tabulate the ballots for Sparhawk subarea of Morgan Hill Landscape Assessment District Number One. Chris, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Chris Kenny, Public Services Director. I'm going to do a brief report because you, on your previous agenda, you, the council approved initiating this vote. This is a vote of the Sparhawk subarea of our landscape assessment district. So what happens tonight is we've sent out ballots to everyone who lives in the district, and they are voting to either raise their assessment or not raise their assessment. How, how the item works is open, the council will open the public hearing and accept any input or comments on the ballot, and then announce the close of the public hearing. And then after that, we will take a quick recess and count votes. And then we'll come back with the total, and if it passes, the assessment would, maximum assessment would be increased. And if it doesn't pass, then it will not be increased.
Okay. Is there any comments by council before opening public comment? Councilmember Borzioli?
Thank you, Mayor. So do we vote or the people in that Sparhawk vote?
They vote, and many of them have sent in their ballots already. But as you, you will, as this public hearing happens, they will have a final chance to turn in a ballot if anyone's here and has not turned it in, and then we would count them.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And we will open a public, the public comment. Do you have anyone wishing to make comments?
It doesn't appear so.
There being none, we will close the public comment. And so at this point in time, we're going to take a five-minute break to go ahead and tabulate the votes, at which point we'll report back in. Five minutes is plenty of time for you. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back here just, just at about 45. Back, and now we're going to turn to Michelle and have you give us the, the vote totals.
So of the 18 ballots, 13 were received, 11 in favor, and two opposed to the rate increase. And so with the results of the ballot tabulation, it is recommended that council would take action to adopt Resolution A.
Okay, very good. We're motion to adopt Resolution A. Moved. Had moved by Councilmember Borzioli, seconded by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There being none, 4-0. That passes. Thank you. Item 13, approve solid waste management rate adjustment for 2024. Aye.
Did I just do something wrong? That's okay. Yeah. Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tanya Cruthers. I'm the Environmental Services Administrator for the City of Morgan Hill. Tonight, I'll be going over item number 13 with you, which is to approve the solid waste management rate adjustment for 2024. A little bit of background before we get too far into it. Recology franchise agreement provides for annual adjustments. The request has to be received in February of each year, which it was, so we got the timely request. And the proposed rate adjustments would become effective on July 1st. The city action that we're doing this evening regulates the rates by formally recognizing and establishing the maximum charge for next fiscal year. In order to come up with the rate adjustment, we follow a very prescriptive formula that's in our contract agreement. The annual rate adjustment is based on the five components shown on the side. So that's the CPI fuel costs, solid waste disposal, recyclables, processing, and exceptional costs. The first four are pretty straightforward. Costs go up, that gets passed on to the rate payers. Costs go down, those savings pass on to the rate payers. In fact, this year, there was a slight negative in the fuel costs, so that got passed on to the rate payers. And the one that's a bit more complex is exceptional costs. So exceptional costs are costs that can be collected in the year following expenses, and it's, the exceptional costs are for things like extra disposal vouchers to help support homeless cleanups or compost procurement to comply with 1383, various costs that come up throughout the year that are not included in the agreement. It also includes implementation funds. Implementation funds are funds that we can request from recology. Recology collects those funds from the rate payers, and those funds go toward implementation of like state, local, and federal regulations. So we operate these programs in order to comply with those regulations. So this year, our exceptional costs that are included in the rates include compost procurement, which is required under SB 1383, and in addition, the implementation funds. So this year, implementation funds that have been requested and which are included in the rate adjustment is staff resources for compliance with SB 1383, which is mandatory organics recycling, installation of trash capture devices for compliance with the trash, state trash mandates, city staffing associated with compliance with 1383 and associated materials, and then costs related to the household hazardous waste program. After doing an internal audit, we get the rate adjustment request. We look at all of the source documents. We make sure all the correct numbers were plugged in in accordance to what's written in our agreement. Make sure it's all good to go. And after going through that process, the current proposal, proposed rate adjustment is 5.07% increase this year. And what that means for residential customers is that when we apply that rate to basic residential service rate of 3201, it's a $2.12 increase per month, making the maximum permitted monthly charge for flat land customers $44.14. And the maximum permitted monthly charge for hillside customers will go up to $48.02. For businesses getting a three-yard standard dumpster serviced once a week, the maximum allowable monthly rate will rise from $462.15 to $485.58. And that concludes my report. I will take any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions by the council? There being none, we'll open for public comment. Any public comments? We'll close, we'll close public comment, and since there likely not be any council discussion, we entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to, motion to approve by Councilmember Borjoli, second by Councilmember Levers, all in favor.
I.
Any opposed? There being none, passes four zero. Thank you. To other business, item fourteen, adopt ordinance number two, three, five, three, new series authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Morgan Hill and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Evening, Mayor and council members. Michael Horta, Human Resources Director. We are bringing back the adoption of the ordinance and ending the contract between Calpers and the City of Morgan Hill. As presented and discussed at the March sixth meeting, this was part of the negotiation process and would allow military service credit to count towards service credit for members in the miscellaneous group. If approved, teammates would be able to purchase service credits beginning May twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. End of report.
That was quick. Thank you. Any questions by the council? There being none, we'll open for public comment. Any public comment?
No.
There being none, we'll close public comments. Again, with there being no council discussion, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Borjoli.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spring, all in favor.
I.
Any opposed? Being none, that passes four zero. Thank you, Michael. Item fifteen, approve Leadership Morgan Hill Project at the Community and Cultural Center.
Was it not up there?
It might not be. I think I missed it up.
Wow, is that their project?
Like.
Yeah, I feel like we need another break.
I'll try and multitask. Do you want a couple minutes? Nope, nope, good. Chris Gioni again, Public Services Director. I'm gonna do just a brief. I got it. Introduction. So annually, Leadership Morgan Hill does a project. Often it involves the city. So I'm not gonna spend time talking about their project, except that we as staff have worked with them on this project that the class has designed and they're gonna be presenting it to you for approval tonight. With that, I will turn it over to Scott. Leave. You should be set to go.
All right. Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for taking the time to review our project. My name is Scott Geffrey. I'm representing the Class of Twenty-four for Leadership Morgan Hill, and I'm here to talk about our leadership project. So. So the CCC in the Splash Zone is a community area used for a variety of events. In the summertime, the kids splashing and playing in the area. It's a nice place to relax. We've got the Friday Night Concert Series there. And our project is designed to improve that area and make it more user friendly, make it more approachable for families to spend time and to really improve the aesthetic of the area. We're gonna be adding seating and some surrounding items, which I'll get into in a little bit. With these improvements, we're actually able to create a space that the city can rent out for parties, providing another revenue stream similar to the Magical Bridge and other areas within the city. And so you can see kind of the current space as it exists today and our vision for the future, what this space will look like. In terms of the details of the improvements that we're recommending to be made is we're going to relocate the existing benches. We've got the square, the square stones. We're gonna relocate those, reuse those in other areas. And we're gonna install five concrete picnic tables. Two of them will be ADA accessible. This will provide seating areas for dining if you're having lunch, if the kids are splashing, just a nice place to to sit and have a little bit more accessibility there. We'll be planting two new trees, our existing trees. We'll be adding a couple more for extra shade over the area. They'll be consistent with the trees that exist in the space currently. We'll be adding an animal sculpture. It's a turtle designed to kind of go with the aquatic theme and to give a little bit of a an attraction for the kids and adults alike. We'll have a freestanding plaque embedded on a rock that will detail the name of the new space. We'll be naming this new area as well as the Leadership Morgan Hill details and potentially some sponsor information as well. And then finally, we'll be adding a single row of bricks for sponsors color to match the overall aesthetic and be relatively discreet. That area does have some some bricks that are already kind of inscribed on, so we didn't wanna we don't wanna be overly apparel with those. And on the next slide here, I've got a layout of proposed design. The two existing trees are on either end of the grassy area. We'll be adding the two new ones in the middle. We've got the turtle sculpture and the plaque as outlined here. Tables evenly spaced, and then the sponsor bricks, single row, four by eight bricks, again, very discreet, inlaid right into the grass there. That'll enable us to help to fund the program so that we can deliver on our vision. So that is kind of the high level overview of our plan and our proposal. And in terms of the schedule of activities that we were planning on, we do expect the project to be completed by September. Although we are optimistic that we can potentially deliver it by early August, gives us a couple more Friday night concerts and a little bit left of the summer for the community to be able to utilize it. Just in terms of logistics and details, it's fairly straightforward. The tables, we've worked with the city to to order through an existing vendor. The trees are being donated by a local nursery, Devil Mountain Nursery. The animal sculpture is available from a nearby vendor, and the plaque, we have the stone in possession and we'll inset a plaque on that once we've determined what the contents of that plaque will be. As far as the activities themselves, the table and the tree installation will be performed by the city, will be funded by the leadership class. We'll work with them to install both the trees and the tables. And the plaque, the turtle, and the bricks will be installed by payers by design. So Bob, who's a classmate of ours, will be making an in-kind donation to do all of the installation activities for those components. So with that, I appreciate your time and look forward to your questions.
Great presentation, Scott. Thank you. I had a quick question. You talked about renaming that area. Is that a, can you tell us what you're thinking about renaming it?
So the classes currently submitted their nominations. We'll be discussing it and coming up with our ideas and happy to share that once we've made a final.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions by Councilmember Levers?
I'm not aware that even has a name right now.
I think it is unnamed, so we will, we will give it a name, and that will allow it to be rented out by the city and have an official designation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, I plopped the Leadership Class of two thousand twenty-four, the second best class ever for doing the project. Marilyn and I were the two thousand twelve class. That indeed was, and Michelle in the two thousand twelve Leadership Class. And that indeed was the best one. What I'm questioning a little bit is the budget. You say the class plan's about ten thousand. How realistic is that? That seems on the lower end to me of what you're trying to do.
So our budget is actually fifteen thousand. We work with the board to get an approval for an increase to accommodate all of the activities. So we do believe that the fifteen thousand is realistic and achievable, and we believe our fundraising activities will allow us to raise that money.
Okay, I apologize. I'm referring to the staffer quote in front of me that I read. Yeah, that is a little bit more realistic. Have you started fundraising already?
So we're kicking off fundraising activities this week. We've just sort of designed our fundraising program, and we're starting to work with the events that we will have, where we will have presence. Businesses will be outreach to and a variety of other activities. So we plan to begin in earnest. We have had some conversations already with with certain people that are interested, some potentially higher value donors. So we're optimistic we can secure those funds, but the full public outreach will begin probably in the next week or so.
Again, speaking from our own experience, that included the planting of trees too. As simple as it sounds, whenever you deal with agencies, it's never a fast process. How realistic is your timeline?
Timeline. So I think the city, we were, excuse me, we were working with Chris to outline that the installation activities, the trees we've been communicated to is fairly straightforward, planting of the trees, ensuring that they're established. They're not large trees, they're smaller trees. Tables is literally just forklifting them in, so there doesn't seem to be too many logistics there. And then again, with the brick installation, that's probably the brick and the turtle installation are probably the two larger items. And so we've been maintaining close contact with Chris's team, and Bob has done multiple site visits, planning it out, doing some pre-planning. So the double is obviously in the details, and once we get into the timelines and want to know how many bricks and those sorts of things, we'll have a better idea of the actual schedule, but we'll be keeping close tabs on this to make sure that we can meet our timeline.
Right, Chris, I don't, maybe something you might change, but because I do remember how we struggled was because the trees need watering. And if that's not in, it might be in place in that area, but if it's not in place, this is not something that is quick, it seems. At times at least.
So the way we're able to do it is the trees are in the grass, so we have the grass that's watered, and that doesn't work on its own. As you might be aware, but what we do is we put these pipes that go down to help take the water that's watering the grass and feed it to the bottom of the roots. So what that does is it doesn't require a separate irrigation system. So so that that's the plan for the trees that get out of there.
Don't go anywhere, Chris. So based upon what you know and what you discuss with the class, is that timeline realistic?
Yeah, they seem to be moving along, and I think I think it is realistic.
Okay, great. No further questions. Thank you so much. I'm excited to see it happening.
Hey, no, real quick, you've got some other classmates here with you. Can we have them stand and be recognized? All right, very good. Yeah.
Billy.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, but may I make a comment?
Please go right ahead.
First of all, it just never amazes me how great Leadership Morgan Hill classmates are. This is a great project. You should be real proud of yourself. Every year I see a project being brought forward, and each of them are tremendous assets to the community and to Morgan Hill. So thank you for coming up with that, that design and everything. And I just want correction though, I have to disagree with my colleagues. So the class of two thousand three, four was the best class. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go to open public comment. Do we have any public comments on this item?
It appears no.
Okay, we'll close the public comment. There being no further council discussion. We will look to get a motion to approve, really fifteen point one, the recommendation is to approve Leadership Morgan Hill Project. And number two, authorize the city manager to execute agreements as needed with Leadership Morgan Hill and contracts to complete the installation. I have a motion. So moved by Councilmember Spring.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Borjoli. All in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? There being none, that passes. Four zero. What is that? Should we be fleeing the building? Yeah, we're well past a break. Thank you. Congratulations, and we look forward to seeing that project when it's complete. Very good. We're moving on to item sixteen, introduce ordinance repealing and replacing chapter five point three, two. Massage establishments. Anybody feeling tense right now? This is the subject to be on right now. Matt, please take it away. I can see the tension in Matt's shoulders. Have a good massage roll. And we're. Right. Wherever you can plant those trees, save some money, right? Awesome. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we, well, we can leave, we can pound the stakes in anyway.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city teammates and members of the community. My name is Matt Mayhod. I'm the Economic Development Director. I'm here tonight to talk about the massage establishment ordinance. So tonight's item is addressing chapter five point three, two massage establishments within the city code. On March twentieth, the city manager approved an administrative policy and procedure for permits for massage establishments. City staff and the police department asked for that, so we could begin the process of outreach to the massage establishments to put the process in alignment with business license renewals. We're here today on April twenty-fourth to hopefully repeal and replace the existing Muni code. And then July first would be the effective date of the new policy and proposed Title V changes. And that would be in sync with the business license renewal cycle that all massage establishment owners will need to comply with a new permitting process. So the purpose of the new requirements is to establish a permitting process to ensure certain minimum building sanitation and operational standards require certain minimum qualifications for the operators and the practitioners in each of the businesses. Restrict commercial practice to those duly certified by the California Massage Therapy Council. And then new standards follow the uniform statewide regulations enacted by the legislature in two thousand and eight, and it's known as the Massage Therapy Act. But there is a new application permit process. The documentation that is required is on this slide. It is not insignificant. It's requiring more documentation than has been required in the past. So you can see the list of the requirements. We want to know the name of the the business, the corporate name, the and their corporate name statement, have a copy of the signed lease and notarized acknowledgement by the landlord that they're leasing to a massage establishment, a detailed diagram showing the interior floor plan of the premises and depicting all interior rooms, color copies of all photo identifications and driver's license and passport for each owner and employee, and then color copies of the Massage, California Massage Therapy Council ID card and the certification for each therapist. These additionally, with the new permitting process, there's new operational standards as well. Once the facility is operational and it does have, it has, it's been permitted and it has a business license, there are new operational standards. No front store windows may be blocked through the use of curtains, blinds, or tents, so you must have visibility into the premises. And the revocation of the massage permit shall result in an immediate cease of operations by the massage establishment, and it will disqualify the massage owner from being issued a future massage establishment permit in the City of Morgan Hill. And then a final order to revoke a massage permit can result in a moratorium period where no other massage establishment shall be permitted to operate at that location by any person for a period not less than five years. So we're talking about that location and that shopping center, that landlord not being able to re-lease to a new massage tenant. With the permitting process, it will, it's, they need to complete the massage establishment permit application. It's that correspondence, that documentation is submitted to the Morgan Hill Police Department. It takes about a thirty to sixty day review, thirty to forty days review period to ensure all the documentation is accurate and complete. There's no change in the business license fee for massage establishments. The massage establishment permit will be issued by the Morgan Hill Police Department prior to the Morgan Hill, the massage establishment receiving a business license. So they go through the permitting process. Once that permit is approved, then they can get their business license. And the permit, the massage permit must be renewed every year as a condition of the business license renewal. So it's a two-step process. But currently, there are seventeen existing massage establishments citywide, and there are four new massage establishments currently being routed through the, through the new process as of yesterday. And through our outreach, there have been five total massage establishment permit applications submitted with the new process, three from existing operators and two from two new operators. There are also two operators who have already been approved as well. There are also two operators who have already been approved as well. So the economic development team has been very targeted in our outreach. On March twentieth, we sent a notice to all massage establishment permit processes. They were emailed to the owners and to the property owners. That are currently operating and then the ones who are applying for new licenses, we reached out to them as well and told them about the new process. And then on March twenty ninth, the notice of the new massage establishment permit was hard copied via U.S. mail to the same group of business operators and to the property owners. The economic development team has talked to two property owners who have massage establishments in their facility, in their. Commercial properties and they had no issue with our approach and our certification process and the potential moratorium. If if there is a moratorium that's required. So tonight's recommendation is to waive the first and second reading of the ordinance. And then introduce the new ordinance replacing chapter five point three two massage establishments and massage professional permit requirements. I am not the subject matter expert on this topic. This effort really came together as an effort really between economic development, who's been involved in the business license process. And trying to streamline the business license process. Brittany Sherman has really been on the tip of the spear with that. Then working with code compliance, planning and PD. So it's been really a team effort. So I'm here hoping just to get this across the finish line tonight. And with that, I'll take your questions and may call a friend for help.
Okay. Yeah, everybody's got questions, even I do. So we'll go first with Councilmember Leivers.
My question is, what will be the enforcement for the, once this is done? Is it, will there be monthly checks or just drive-bys or how are they going to manage this?
Our our code enforce, so first of all, we're, economic development team is working. With the police department to go through this initial permitting process. So, you know, we have twenty one, seventeen plus four new ones, twenty one businesses that need to go through this permit process. And they need to have this new permit approved before July one. So they now have almost sixty days to get through that process. So if those businesses are not in compliance by July one, they will not receive a business license and will not be allowed to operate in the city of Morgan Hill. So that's first step. The second step is ongoing code enforcement, which our code enforcement team. Does on a regular basis, they've been going out and visiting massage parlors. They don't make, you know, they make unannounced visits. And there have been, working with PD, they've gone in together on some of these visits with code enforcement and the PD together. And there have been in the past, there have been sting operations as well. So it's ongoing enforcement.
Good, thank you.
I want to jump in real quick because I want to play off what you just asked. With regards to previous concerns and inappropriate activities that we've been made aware of. How will this process help to monitor and mitigate those concerns? I mean, I get I get the sting operations. It seems like we've done that in the past. Is there anything new here that will help us to monitor this?
Yeah, I think the biggest step is the certification process to make sure that. Each therapist that's working within these establishments is certified with the California Massage Therapy Council. That they do have a certification, they do have a license. That's the biggest step. I think what we found is many folks don't have that documentation and this is the first hurdle. So I. I think just making sure that everybody receives their initial permit is potentially going to weed some bad actors out.
And and the biggest change, Mayor, is that it's one of the issues we've had in the past is that we're, you know. We've been able to shut down some of the illegal operations. They just pop right back up.
Right.
And many of the owners of these, the alleged owners of these establishments are. The ones that are operating illegally are just spa owners. And so we haven't had the ability to truly shut down the establishments. What happens is we'll revoke the business license, but somebody can come back a month later and apply for a new, a new person. Can apply for a business license for the exact same establishment. So this will prevent those from just popping right back up once we're able to shut them down.
Got it, okay, very good, thank you. Councilmember Spring.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt, for the report. I have a couple of questions and I apologize if I'm off of my questions here and I'm trying to be serious. The, so is a spa the same as a massage center?
Yeah, anybody who provides massage type touch, they have to all have the same requirement. So each spa that's in that same use category. Has to have a permit.
But if a tanning place also provides massage services.
If they provide massage services, they are required to have this permit.
Okay, do they know that they fall into this category?
If, reached out to everybody.
The. The one, one thing that struck me is that these. Businesses should not, should not block the front windows. If I were a client and would go in there, I wouldn't want people from the outside looking that I'm going in there and that I'm getting a massage at one of the table there.
Well, it's just the front lobby area where they can't have blinds and the windows can't be covered. So the front lobby area, the the front windows cannot be covered. But but the back, the rooms where the actual massages are taking place. Obviously, you know, they're in an enclosed room, they can't have locks on the doors. There are other certain requirements, but it's just the front windows of the establishment that can't be blocked.
Right. So I just saw a new, new, new place going up and I'm sure they're a great business right next to the UPS store and they already covered their windows. So do they have shortly after they open up the business, city says welcome to Morgan Hill, you have to remove all that?
Yes, sir.
And that might just be, you know, how they put up the white tape when they're under construction. Because I saw that as well.
No, it has their logo and everything.
Yeah, but I think it's the white construction, you know, so people don't see what they're doing construction wise, but that will come down once they open up.
Okay, that triggered my interest. I wonder if that's a little bit too restrictive. I mean, that doesn't tell you anything whether or not what's going on behind those walls.
Yes, Chief Pausgrove or Captain Ramirez to come forward and talk about the importance of the opaqueness.
And while they're coming up, I will say that's best practice, it's followed by other communities.
That might well be, you know, I, they're with me, I've never seen one of those places.
Evening, Council, Captain Laura Ramirez with the Morgan Hill Police Department. So the reason for the opaqueness is what we're trying to also appear is human trafficking. And the individuals that are being trafficked within some of these businesses. And so the best practice and standard issues is to have the front lobby open as a deterrent for individuals that are engaging in that type of behavior. Not to want to go in and be seen in those establishments. So that's part of it. It's an industry standard across and best practices from the Massage Therapy Council.
Okay. I respect your opinion on that one, I'm not the expert. The other thing that triggered my interest, why are we asking for passport and driver's licenses? For why not just a simple ID?
So some, not everyone has a driver's license, so you're asking for some type of form of government ID. So that's why it's either a driver's license or passport.
But if, maybe that person doesn't drive a car, so she has a regular ID, why wouldn't that be okay?
A regular California ID will be fine as well.
Well, I bring it up because that's not what's mentioned.
Right, and we're looking for an actual government issued ID as well.
I think we should word it that way. The, because I hope it makes sense what I'm trying to say, right? The. Did you get any feedback from our businesses?
The businesses that Brittany's been in contact, the only feedback that we've gotten or concerns that we've heard was, the question was, is the fee going up? And the answer was no. And everybody else has been, that we've heard from, has been asking questions about how do I file? What steps do I need to take? Who do I send it to?
Okay, and coming back to the employees that, so every employee needs, will be checked somehow, but employees do come and go. So but by the, by the time, at that time, they have the license. So so do you, every time they get a new employee, they have to run that by the police department?
That's correct. Again, we're trying to curb the human trafficking of individuals going from one parlor to the next. So we've seen within, with our district attorney who has a human trafficking team that goes out and provides. Resources to those individuals that have been being human trafficked. We're trying to curb that and not make sure that it's not happening here in the city. And so what we've seen through the industry is they get just move from one parlor to the next. So if one parlor does get shut down in, say, another city, then they just move the individuals here. And so we're trying to curb all that to make sure that the individual owner knows that. Well, when we're asking for them to identify who's there, we know who's, who's there and that they're not being used and just being moved around from one to the next.
So you're maintaining a list of of employees that were arrested in the past? Or how do you determine? When you get an ID, how do you determine? What do you do with it?
So when the initial application has a section for them to list all employees. And then they also have to provide all of the employees California Massage Therapy Council ID. And then when an inspection is done, whether by the police department or code enforcement, we're able to go in and see who that list of employees are on there. And while they also have to post all of the massage therapists within the business in the lobby. So if we go there and find somebody that is not on our list of listed employees, then we know that individual, they didn't contact us to add that person to their, to their list of employees.
And and I will say that that's already, that's consistent with state law. The only difference is that we haven't enforced that. So under state law, they have to keep a list of their employees and their massage certificates. And the reason for the ID is so that we can make sure that the person who is holding the massage certificate is actually that person that certificate was issued to.
Yeah, and how realistic is it to assume that the bad actor, if, assuming, I guess there will be some, that they actually follow that process?
Well, the hope is if with the extra requirements we're now imposing on massage establishments, that we kind of weed out those bad actors. We will be able to go in and identify who the owners are. As, say, Attorney, Attorney said earlier, we all tend to like straw owners. So we're trying to really find the individuals. We don't look at the individuals that are performing the acts, they're more of the human, human trafficking victims. And so our approach as a police department has changed from doing undercover operation stings to be more of a resource provider to them. And being able to go after the individuals who are trafficking, essentially.
I'd like to add to that, that the district attorney's office and the sheriff's department both have a human trafficking task forces. Due to the increase of these massage parlors. Using women to perform these illegal services. We found fourteen illegal massage parlors being advertised on the web in Morgan Hill. And so this is a very real problem and concern that we have regarding these victims. It's organized crime and they have such a vast network in the area that they move women, usually women, from state to state. And so while we can't and it's not right to prosecute the women who are being trafficked. We do need to have something in place to shut down these organized crime locations. And that's what we're after, not the legal ones.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you saying that and I hope it will go after the owners and not the victims in here. Because I think we want to protect primarily those women, right? But let's be frank, that's what we talk about here. On the other hand, of course, I don't want to hurt. The businesses that do do everything right and are needed and do a great job. And and so, you know, there's both sides of this, right? And I just hope that we find the right balance, right? And and a good process. Do you, do you also, and I guess, because you just answered my next question, because in preparation of tonight, I kind of Googled around. Because I really have never been to any of those spas. So it's fairly easy to find bad actors. Depending where, I mean, do you just Google it and then it tells you? Do you do that as well and then you go after them?
Yes, but again, it's challenging to find the person responsible. And so while we could find the person committing the act, that's not the person that we need to go after to stop the organized crime. And so this is a, our tool to prevent this from happening in Morgan Hill. Especially when we do finally find the person responsible, they just transfer the ownership of that massage parlor to another person in their organized crime. And they continue to run the illegal activities.
So how do you know that the person who applies for the license is actually the real owner?
I think the best answer is, is we don't. I mean, we don't know where their funding is coming from, which is the reason for all of the other requirements that we've put in here. I don't believe that this is a burden to, you know, a legitimate spa that provides massage service. They do all the, all the things we're asking, they do already. So it's not, the only thing that might be a little more burdensome is we have a much more detailed application now. And we're asking questions that we haven't always asked, but otherwise. The actual requirements, the maintenance requirements and safety requirements, all things that, you know, a good massage place, a good massage establishment will already do.
Right, at the end of the day, you talk about some sort of organized crime here, right? They do that in every city and they're probably owned in several places and rotate and I don't know what they do. And money laundering and all that stuff could happen, right? And 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 I just wonder if those processes even help to find, find what you're actually looking for, right?
It has helped. There are other cities within our county that have this very similar ordinance in place. And they've worked with the district attorney's office to prosecute individuals and shut down rings all up and down the state. A big one out of Southern California as well that was operating out of here in Northern California.
And I would suggest that if we did curtail the number of illegal massage parlors, that it would benefit the legitimate ones as well. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Borghiole.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, you said there's no fee increase, but it sounds like there's a great deal of access increases. Especially time with staff. So how are we cost recovering that?
So on the, on the front end for the business to provide the documentation and complete the permit, there's an upfront time and effort for them. You know, the PD still has to do their review, but if the applicant provides all the documentation, the document, documentation matches up, they go through the review process. And there is a fee recovery, the initial fee for, you know, an application is a thousand seventy six dollars, so it's not insignificant.
Okay, just one question for Police Department. Can a bad actor infiltrate infiltrate a good establishment?
Like the actual owner or like the?
No, no, so you have an owner of a massage business and then she hires or he hires an employee. And and that employee has all the credentials, but the employee is doing nefarious work in that private room.
Absolutely, but I think what we see with the ones that are. Doing everything right and following the law, they'll be able to identify an employee on their own and take collective action immediately. Because it is a bad, it would be a bad look for their business, but we see those individuals that are following the current law that's already set in place. They take the collective action really quick before we even get involved.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I, again, I have another question based on what Councilmember Borghiole asked. So let's say that that scenario played out. Does the owner of that establishment have a way of reporting that employee who's done something nefarious? And making sure that they are now identified in the system?
Yeah, so they can notify the California Massage Therapy Council. And then from there, they will be able to put a restriction on, either revoke their actual license to their California Massage Therapy Council. Or put a restriction. And so when we do a background check or and contact the council, they'll be able to let us know any activity on that individual specific license.
Got it, thank you. Okay, no other questions? We will go to open to public comment. Do we have any, any men from the public wishing to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll close the public. Okay, we'll close the public comment. Uh again, there not being any further council discussion. Uh we will look for a uh motion to uh waive the first and second reading of the ordinance and then to introduce a new ordinance replacing chapter five point three two. Uh massage establishment and massage professionals permit requirements. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I think we have to separate it.
We have to do it individually, so one at a time. Okay, so we're at uh the number one, waive the first and second reading. I have a motion by Councilmember Borjoli, second by Councilmember Spring. Uh we will do a roll call.
Um next one.
The next one. Okay. Uh introduce new, well, it's all in favor.
Right.
Aye. Any opposed? Being none, that passes four zero. And so uh number two, introduce the new ordinance replacing chapter five point three two. Do I have a uh motion?
So Mayor, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
You have to read it first, right?
No, afterwards, you're fine.
Yep. You have a motion?
Yes.
Second, second by Councilmember Spring. Uh we'll do the roll call.
I'll read the title.
Read the title and do the roll. We'll get through this. We'll get through this one.
An ordinance of the city of Morgan Hill repealing and replacing chapter five point three two massage establishments and massage professionals permit requirements. Title five, business licenses generally to establish a permitting procedure for massage therapy establishments and services. Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Spring?
Yes.
Levers?
Aye.
And Borjoli?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Kevin. Uh item number seventeen, sewers and industrial waste ordinance updates. Is the microphone on?
There we go.
Good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, teammates. My name is James Rovain. I'm the Deputy Director for Utilities. The item before you today is uh to introduce uh an agenda item for updating our sewer s- uh city sewer uh provisions to include some modification for certain section of the provisions, specifically section thirteen point twenty zero thirty and thirteen point third uh twenty zero ninety, specifically uh the provision that require us to or or the definition, some of the definitions needs to be updated, including uh some of the local limit values for the pollutants. And the reason for that change is because recently the South Central Regional Water uh wastewater authority uh that a visit or an audit from the uh state requiring them to update their uh sewer use ordinance. And because all of our sewer are treated at that location, as a result, we fall under the umbrella of that particular entity. Therefore, we need to update our ordinance as well. So with that, I'll go straight uh to the uh what needed to happen with this. So a few things that needs to happen is uh update certain definitions, like I said previously. Uh that will allow our users to get clarifications on some of the definitions. And the most critical thing about that is we are trying to get uniformity between the two entities. And the reason for that, the first part of it is that staff from that wastewater plant enforce uh or administer the program that we have here. It's called the pre-treatment program. So for that reason, and because all of our pollutants goes to be treated there, certain pollutants level need to be administered. And they are the one doing that. So our ordinance needs to be uh in compliance with what the state require them to update. So with that, uh I will go to the next slide, which uh pretty much go over what I just uh explained and to you. It shows that the SQUAD, which is the South County Regional Wastewater Authority, uh is the entity that actually uh does those type of uh pre-treatment program for us. Uh and it also allow us to be able to uh it allow us to be able to be in compliance with the state as well. So as I mentioned before, the the changes uh will minor minimally impact the uh the changes that we are requesting to make to that uh particular ordinance. What type of changes uh will that be impacting uh the end user? No, the answer to that is no. It will not impact them drastically. Uh what that those changes will do is help protect our infrastructure. And it will help us with the the type of sludge quality that the plant put out. Also will help with the water quality that is the end result of the water discharge that's being used for, say, irrigation. Less uh pollutant will be uh removed, more pollutants will be removed from those uh uh wastewater. The end user will be less affected by chemicals, say, for example, the staff that are taking care of our collection system, the staff that work at the wastewater treatment plant, all of that, all of those uh uh staff will be protected by reducing or eliminating some of those pollutants. Uh next slide, show actual tables of the pollutants that are being uh uh modified or introduced. If you look at the actual uh light shaded green uh table, there's an old one. Those are the old uh values that's being replaced. And on the new on the right most uh column, you will see the uh new data that being in either modified or being reduced. As you can see, uh quite a few of those, about six of them uh are being uh changed. Uh you can see the value for arsenic, for example, is it's been uh reduced from a one point one to a point eighty eight. And there are three of those that have been changed. And there are also new value that's being added. And that is uh one of them will be, for example, chloride. And you can see the unit there is twenty nine hundred. We didn't have that uh uh previously. So those are the changes that uh we are asking you tonight uh to review. Uh what our recommendation is, is to first waive uh the first and second reading for the ordinance. And second, introduce ordinance updating the city's uh sewer uh use provisions. With that, I will take any questions you have.
Good. Thank you. Any questions by the council? Councilmember Spring?
Uh thank you. Uh so I I'm a member of the SQUAD board, uh as is my colleague, Martinez Beltran. I'm also it's a chair this year. So so in January and and April, uh uh the SQUAD board, the authority of of the sewer plant in in Gilroy, went through this process and approved this this already. So so for us here as council, this basically is a this is housekeeping to make sure we're 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 keeping uh in align uh yeah, we'll be aligned with what what the SQUAD or does in Gilroy. The city of Gilroy will have to do the same if they haven't done that. That's correct understanding, right?
Um uh I know that the board has already approved uh uh the change for SQUAD itself. Uh city of Gilroy, the last I understand, they didn't have an ordinance. I think they used the SQUAD. It seems uh I'm not positive on that, but uh uh we have an ordinance and we have to follow suit because we fall under the umbrella.
Right, right. I'm well aware of that. So it's really a housekeeping item. I I just bring it up as a question so that also the public understands the 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 real authority is the 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 SQUAD joint power authority that owns the uh manages the sewer plant in Gilroy for Morgan Hill and Gilroy.
The player co-owned by both uh cities.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. No further question.
Thank you. That was helpful. Anyone else know their questions? Uh we'll open for public comment. I mean, then we'll close the public comment and uh since no need for uh council discussion. Uh the recommendation here is to waive the first and second reading of the ordinance. Do you have a motion to do so?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Borjoli, second by Councilmember Spring, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Being none, passes four zero. Item number two, introduce ordinance updating the city's sewer use provisions. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to.
Motion by Councilmember Borjoli, seconded by Councilmember Spring. Uh Michelle, would you read the ordinance and take the role?
An ordinance of the city of Morgan Hill amending section thirteen point twenty point zero three zero definitions and section thirteen point two zero point zero nine zero specific pollutant limitations of chapter thirteen point twenty sewers and industrial waste of title thirteen Public Services to regulate sewer use and set uniform requirements for discharges into the wastewater collection and treatment system. Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Spring?
Yes.
Levers?
Aye.
Borjoli?
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, receive the monthly budget update, March twenty twenty four financial and investment reports. Have to move you to the front of the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, uh Dan Ring, uh Finance Director, uh tried to brief on this uh item. As uh C-Match was mentioned earlier, uh we're going to release the the team is working on the uh busy working and analyzing the budget and we are planning to release them uh next week. So um I want to steal the tender from the team, but uh overall, uh so uh for this year, uh as of March thirty first, the third quarter ended March thirty first, two hundred and twenty four. Uh pretty much nothing has been changed since we last presented to you, uh I believe in uh in in March. Uh first of all, we'll go over some of the uh majors to general funds, which includes a general fund. Uh as of now, as I mentioned, uh there's nothing to uh we're not recommending any budget adjustment at this time. Um uh so far, the property tax is trending uh as we slightly as we uh had uh budgeted. Uh but there's the offset by the steady downward revision to our cell tax revenue. And expenditures are currently tracking budget uh as of uh today as well. Um for the public services, um this is not something that uh new, but revenues are currently tracking below budget for the current year. Um and the team is currently busy working on the updating fee schedule uh to bring that to you uh sometime uh right after the budget release, uh hopefully in the early summer. And uh in the meantime, uh we start expect that this fund for current year uh will need some some sort of a short term internal funding uh to uh carry over the, I mean, just to uh until the new fees is adopted and then the the companies especially on the development activity to return to back to normal. And uh overall expenditure expenditures are tracking uh slightly, actually slightly better than budget. So the offset from the uh reduce uh revenue from the and slightly uh uh better than expenditure expenditures is slightly less than um than than the overall revenue reduction. And as for enterprise funds, uh for vast consumption, uh through uh first nine months of the year, our residents consume about two percent less compared to prior two year average. Uh both of the revenue and expenditures for the uh operation of the sewer and uh and water are tracking budget. And um this graph reflects uh no chances uh last year seeing seeing them in uh in January and uh March. Uh we still at the high level at the uh we can general reserve uh currently, but expect that to expand out uh in the next uh few years. And you will surprise us uh more upgraded uh uh in the next week when we release the budget. And that concludes my short presentation. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have, or you can call out until the budget is released.
Right. Good. Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Borjoli?
Uh thank you, Mayor.
Matt, it's good seeing you in a tie. Um so revenues are tracking below budget in what areas?
Um this mostly for the uh developer services fund, uh fund two oh six. Uh that's a fund that we uh charge the developer for the uh permits or all the uh design as well as inspection.
And um uh i- is that some of the reasons why the fund will need some short term internal borrowing?
Yes, that's correct. Uh the fund is supposed to be self-funded uh mostly by developers with the uh support, of course, from the some of the general services that general fund need to uh support. But overall, the funds uh should be to pull to uh um uh support by the charges that we charge to uh any development or developers uh to that makes the fund for to fund the uh expenditures uh the services that we provide. But as of this year, we anticipate that the combination of uh uh deferred projects, as well as the tight projects uh and the carryover from the uh basically uh net uh deficit in the prior years. So that uh formation of those uh probably result in a a a need of the uh a short term borrowing to to make the the uh within uh at the uh net zero.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome. Any other questions? Councilmember Spring?
Uh uh thank thank you. I I was looking into uh so on with regards to the general fund, that slide that you have, the property tax revenue is higher than budgeted right now. Uh and the sales tax revenue is lower. The I looked at the actual data compared to the budget last year. So so the sales tax revenue is only eighty thousand dollars less right now compared to a prior year. But the property tax revenue is actually three hundred and fifty thousand more compared to prior year. So 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 that's like, to me, that that's not slightly higher. That's actually significantly higher. Uh uh which is a good thing, right?
Yes, it's a good thing. But remember that when you compare to uh when we budget or we uh when we plan for the current year, uh the budget is of course uh if the we could continue and then the budget years of course supposed to be higher than prior year. That's why when we compare to prior year, they may be higher, but when we compare to budget, they may be less uh in this case uh for sales tax, for instance.
Right, right. So so the property tax didn't surprise me. One would expect that when you look around town town, right, that that is going up. Uh do you do you do you think that trend will continue throughout the rest of the the year?
Um again, I want to steal the thunder, but overall, I think um from the monthly uh data that the county uh sent to us, uh we do anticipate that uh 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 property tax at least continue to uh grow unless at the level that uh we have experienced uh last year. Not really hard to uh, you know, to predict um uh any any time time rise longer than that because uh when the economy and with high interest rates, anything could happen. Uh as for sales tax, we do get the update from the consultant quarterly, and we just base on the latest estimate from our sales tax consultant.
Okay. The and I'm sure we'll talk more about that when we talk about the budget then, but the the again, I'm not very much worried yet about just being eighty thousand dollars off on the sales tax revenue. Uh unless you tell me this is just the start of a big downtrend.
Well, well, yes. Well, well, yes, uh, yeah, I I think we we are read, uh, we are read the same news that released by the uh, the uh. Statistics Bureau, right? Um, uh, so far, I think the consumer is still very resilient. But the the for us right here is that uh, even though cell tax may be uh, higher when compared to uh, prior year. But they are uh, slightly lost that we have fast for. Obviously, uh, the quote rate is not a half as high as what we say the cost of the of the service that we will buy.
Right, and I think you're doing the right thing. I got to know you over the years, you're. Fairly conservative with with the budgets, right? For for good reasons, right? And we always wanna do better than what uh, what you budget. But did you of those eighty thousand that are less than budgeted, the sales tax revenue. Becoming less, do, is is there a trend? Is it? Is it one, is it grocery stores? Is it car sales? What is it?
Uh, based on the latest quarter, uh, we we see that uh, I think we could. Uh, for those who shopping car, for new cars, you could see the softening of the uh, of uh, new car sales. Uh, you see that in the past, I would say, you look at, you go to shopping car last year. You expect to pay higher than the manufacturing success, success, MSRP, manufacturing success retail price. But now, uh, I'm sure that you could go into to any dealership and bargain or obviously uh, ask for a lower price than MSRP. Uh, the the trend overall is the consumers still spending, but uh, worries are there. Um, I think you could read uh, any uh, the polls, any voters that uh, go out there, they. Even though uh, the in quote unquote, the actual realistic economy is uh, still growing, but uh, there are. Uh, of course, there there's um, I mean, need that there's some worris, where some from the consumers.
Okay, in my. Predictions over the past few years have been pretty accurate. You must have made, right?
Yes.
I I should, I should go to Vegas more.
No one, no one would have predicted that uh, what we went through in two hundred and twenty. We would suspect.
I was pretty much alone when I said we're gonna have a quick recovery and we did. Um, so what is your? Assessment without me putting you too much on the spot? Are 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 we still okay?
I would say that in the uh, short term, uh, we were doing fine, okay, just because that we. I mean, at the uh, uh, high level of reserve, of course, because of the actions that you have taken, uh, very wise actually has taken. Uh, for the uh, long term. Um, it worries me because uh, uh, the inflation is continued to be elevated. And uh, certainly some certain our revenues are not, uh, you know, fresh up to the uh, rate inflation. And sell taxes, this is the the example.
Right, but but and correct me if I'm wrong, but is it also fair to say that that? In in the budget, we never, we don't include revenues coming in from businesses yet to come in, right? That we know there are somewhere in the pipeline.
We do, uh, we work closely, uh, at quality meeting with the sell tax consultant, we work closely with the economic, economic, the Valentin. Uh, they do have a better picture of uh, what's coming in and what's uh, on the horizon. And we do do that in, uh, we tell that to our second sell task consultant, so the she can do that in there, uh, in the uh, projection.
But but in your actual budget that there were comparing against, are are numbers? Let I'm just using hypothetically, next year, a new car dealership were to open up. Are those numbers considered already or not yet?
That will be definitely a positive impact and something that we.
Right, of course you would, but the numbers.
Yes, that will be.
Considered in in your budget already or not?
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, they're not, right, so.
Until we know that there's a high likelihood and they're gonna open their doors.
If we had two, two more, twenty more businesses opening up. Doing great business, the 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 trend line would change again, right?
Definitely, yeah. If twenty car dealership come to city, everyone get a raise.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, could you go to that that slide that shows that downward trend that we're, and and again, off of what uh, Councilmember Spring is saying? Question being, what do we need to do to that blue line to get that going the other direction?
Uh, basically, get more business coming in to the city, uh, more business that generate uh, uh, tax revenue positive. Uh, that's why I ask control our expenditures.
Right, more businesses. Retail, sales tax.
Got it, definitely.
Hotel. Okay, very good. Any other questions? There being none, we'll go to the public. Any? Public comments?
Yeah.
Being none, we'll close the public comment and uh, if there's no other discussion, we'll receive the report. There's no action on this. We'll just receive the report. God, thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, item nineteen, proposed future council initiated agenda items. Christina, we'll turn that over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this part of the agenda um, is going through the items that have been previously brought forward by council members um, to be. Uh, considered by the council. So this is basically the second step in the process. So the first step is the council member brings it up. Um, on the next item that we'll deal with, which is uh, future agenda items. And so these items have been brought forward, and so we're gonna go through them. And so I'm gonna put the first two together, so appointing versus electing the city treasurer, including terminates for the city treasurer. And so this is an item that was brought forward by Councilmember Levers, and she requested discussion on uh. Pointing versus electing the city treasurer. And so pointing versus electing a city treasurer can have various implications depending on the context. Who needs the city? And so just some um, uh, things to consider about appointing a city treasurer. I'm looking at the expertise and qualifications that an appointed city treasurer would have, accountability to the city manager, stability, continuity. Efficiency in the selection process and no additional cost as the finance director could serve in this capacity. Certainly, we have an elected city treasurer, and so um, some of the thought processes why a city would have an elected city treasurer relate to democratic representation. Independence from political influence and encouraging competition. And so we're seeking direction from council tonight on whether. The council would like to agendize this item for a formal discussion at a future meeting, so basically the third step in the process. Um, and so hand in hand with this is item number two. So if the council um, ends up wanting to uh, keep. The treasurer as elected, then item for discussion potentially. Is whether or not to create terminates, like the council has decided to put on the ballot related to the mayor and council members. And so um, basically, we're asking council whether or not they'd like to agendize this item for formal discussion in the future. And so what we'll do now is they'll turn it back over you and you'll turn it over to uh, Mayor Pro Tem Levers. To um, kind of talk about the reason why she brought these forward.
Very good. Councilmember Levers?
Yes, thank you very much for bringing this back. Um, I just believe that I, instead of. Just one person running for the election of the treasurer, there should be open competition that we should have uh. That instead, we should make sure the person is really qualified, that their background is in finance and. I really tend to think it should be uh, our city. Doing it. I don't think we need an elected treasurer. That's just basically what I'm saying, because we could have. Unqualified people running. With not anybody qualified running, and then we'd end up, you know, with an unqualified candidate. So that's why I think it should be appointed and I think it should be um. Appointed by someone on the city staff. Also, I do think if it was go to an elected, I think it should be on the same term limits in case. You know, they. In case the person isn't qualifying, we have a way to, this community has a way to vote them out. So.
So the discussion really here is, do we want to go to step three? And have a deeper discussion with the uh, city staff doing a uh, a city, a a report. That we can then discuss and then determine, does the council want to stay with an elected position or go to an appointed position? Which at that point would be a staff member. Uh, so do we, any thoughts on?
And and just a reminder, this is not a, this is not debate. It's really just a, it's really just a question of is the city council interested in bringing it back?
Correct, that is correct. Any thoughts on that?
Well, yes, for me.
Okay.
Yeah, we went through the process, what, four, five years ago?
Or the two, uh, November two thousand and eighteen ballot, there was discussion of whether or not to include that at the time that we had city clerk on the ballot, but we decided to not move forward.
I I I completely agree with my colleague Levers. Uh, I I think we're. I I I don't know if our current treasurer will run again, uh, or would run again, uh, but but. Uh, I don't think there will be much competition. I'd be happy to have find even one person wanting to do that, so I I think it would make sense to point that. Uh, and ask our voters whether or not they would be okay to do.
Again, tonight, what we're just deciding here, though, is we want to go to step three.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Yeah, we we want to avoid.
Yes, exactly.
Debate on it, right. So let's just, let's go to that. We uh.
Do we need to formalize this with a motion and a vote? You want to do it that way or just, I I'm I'm fine with trample, okay? How many of us want to bring this back for uh, for further discussion? I'm good with it. Obviously. And and uh, Councilmember Spring, you're good with bringing it back?
Yeah, to 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 both points, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and and that'll come back at a future date. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, item number three.
Okay, great. So the next item was brought forward by Councilmember Borjoli, and so this is a discussion. For the council to consider discussion on policy to prevent the council from taking positions on foreign or international events. And so we're looking for direction from council if they want this to go to the third step and have a discussion. Limiting the uh, conversations and decisions that come before council.
Thank you. Councilmember Borjoli?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I uh, I sent in uh, supplemental material uh, so so on this and it's. Um, somewhat quite extensive and it defines what we should really concentrate on and and maybe not concentrate on. Uh, and I gave examples in the supplemental item that we um, that I submitted, so I'm not gonna. Repeat that. I'm hoping that my colleagues did read that material. But then I I further looked at the uh, sustainable Morgan Hill document. And I I I kind of realized, uh, you know, we we already have a lot. Of what we should do and not do in this sustainable Morgan Hill document. Uh, for an example, um, the ongoing uh, city council priorities, you know, enhancing public safety and quality of life. Um, maintaining and enhancing infrastructure, and I can go on with these priorities, but the point is. We we have a lot of what we should and should not do in this sustainable Morgan Hill document. Um, and strategic priorities, fiscal sustainability, again. If it doesn't pertain to these priorities that we've already established out there. In addition to, uh, again, I I definitively outlined. Uh, some criteria of uh, what we shouldn't concentrate on in supplemental material. Uh, I I think we really need a discussion. So as not to have an item like on March sixth. At where we entertained something and it got truly out of hand and um. What that did, though, it cost the city uh, close to ten thousand dollars in taxpayer money. Needlessly. Uh, so it was seventy five hundred just in police protection for that one item. And and about twenty five hundred and other staff, additional staff and uh, discussions and meetings. Uh, so I think we've really got to be very careful spending taxpayer money. Uh, or wasting taxpayer money like on the March sixth uh, meeting. So I I really feel that we need to bring this back and have a discussion so we could. Uh, more pinpoint what we should and should not bring forward as a an agenda item.
Okay, very good. So the what's before us is, do we want to now go to step three with this particular item? Uh, if you have any thoughts on that, but again, we're not gonna get into debate about. Uh, the item itself, but. Um, I I would be good with bringing that forward. Marilyn, you know, yeah. Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, I I I struggle. I understand where you're coming from, but you know, like, that can be a domestic issue. Uh, justice is controversial, uh, where you might have the same expenditure and we had those evenings too. I remember some of those days. Uh, and again, you know, what is international versus domestic? Covid crisis came from from somewhere uh, here, right? So we shouldn't have talked about it. It global warming, we don't want to talk about it, but uh, I I I struggle where 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 to define it. We can have a discussion, I'm okay with that, but I think will be very hard to to narrow it down, especially. Uh, you know, I'm the only immigrant on 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 this council. Uh, some of us have families in other areas of the world that are maybe more impacted by some of of what's happening in the world. Uh, and 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 but we live here in this community and are impacted and 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 of course, then we want our. Uh, council and others to take a stand and say something or do something and then just saying, we're not gonna listen to you. We should not debate, it's it's a comment on uh, on on on.
On the, on the, we want to avoid this discussion in the substance of the request and just whether or not it's worth bringing.
I'm okay to go with it, but I I we have to be very careful how we limit anything.
So that being the case, we will move forward with that item and have that come back at a future, future council uh, council meeting. And for a disturbance policy for city council meetings.
Got it. So um, this particular one, um, we have in the past brought forward a code of conduct policy for public meetings, and we did that after Governor Newsom. Newsom signed into law SB eleven hundred, and so we provided um, a potential draft of a policy. Um, and in following that meeting, the council decided not to move forward with a conduct policy. Um, however, in the February twenty first meeting, Councilmember Borjoli requested the council revisit it. And develop a policy on disturbances within the council chamber during council meetings to prevent unacceptable behaviors. Um, and so we're seeking direction on whether or not the council wants us to come back and look at um, establishing a policy.
Very good. Councilmember Borjoli?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So again, uh, March sixth uh, city council meeting, I think, was uh, an eye opener for all of us and it taught. Many of us a lesson on uh, being not respectful and uncivil. And uh, distracting. And so um, I. Uh, in my supplemental that I supplied, you know, I gave, for example, three items. And some of which is already in uh, a a policy that we tried to bring forward. Um, uh, so for example, when the mayor did the proclamations, you know, people clapped. And and they did it respectfully and and that was okay. Well, if you really notice uh, in a couple of past meetings recently, um. You know, there was uh, a person in the audience, you know, really going, yes, yeah, 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 and he calls out a council member. That's something that could be intimidating to another person sitting next to him or her. And so I I I think you have to look at it like, uh. Is that person disturbing an an another person in the audience? Or intimidating another person by their actions? So I think we have to limit those types of things. And uh, and I just said an example of the outburst, the outburst like that, which we've had. Would intimidate others from speaking. So um, I would, I I would really like to bring this forward as a next step and at the March sixth. Uh, meeting, uh, you know, there were, there were cards. You know, pretty big cards and and they were being held up. And they were hand raising. And when you go to the podium, uh, there's no cards should be at the podium, only. A piece of paper to read from, and they brought items up at the podium. So I think we need again to spell out a policy on, and I think we need to show. You know, how how to be respectful and civil and 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 cordial in a business meeting like a city council meeting. So I'd like to bring this forward based on that.
I've got a couple of questions for you on an on an item like this. First of all, what I don't want to do is go back into the council norms. I don't want to have that discussion again. If this is different, then I'd be open up into it, but I do also want to be sure that. I mean, let's use the example that Councilmember Borjoli just brought up. Somebody, somebody in the audience is is. You know, carrying on. Let's say we have this policy. What does that even give us?
Does well, I and I appreciate the question. I want to make sure we're not getting into the subject matter.
Oh, I do, I want to as well, but I, because it.
But I'll, I'll answer that question.
Very good, that's, okay.
Something that's important to consider in making a decision is, under the new state law, if we have a policy in place. We can um, warn people, we have to warn people if they're in violation. And then if we've warned them, they're in violation. And then if we've warned them, they're in violation and they continue their behavior, then we can remove them individually. Um otherwise, the only alternative is simply to shut down the meeting. So this this would give us the ability to remove people who are disruptive.
Okay, I again, my concern, I just want to become too restrictive, and so we would just have to have that conversation at step three. Um so I again, I would be okay with with doing it and then having the conversation. We can determine from there how how much we wanna go into this, and and if we do at all at any point, we can always say, no, it's step three. So I'd be okay. Was any other thoughts on it?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I know you know, you're probably good.
Councilmember, any thoughts? No, we we went through that before. This keeps coming up every few months, and I I don't see any to bring that back.
Okay, so it is three to one. We'll go ahead and and we'll we'll bring it back at a at a at a future meeting, to be determined. Okay, very good. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Christina. Uh so uh any, with that being said, any future council initiated agenda items?
Um actually, Mayor, I I I'm not sure if if it may be a future agenda item, but um on the council norms I I would like the addition of no campaigning from the the days uh on there, listed on there. So
How do we, city manager? Yeah, I think because one, I think that's kind of hard to determine, and and uh it's me in a difficult spot to say, you know, that's campaigning, you can't do that. Um I mean, unless it's unless it's blatant, hey, vote for me. I mean, that's campaigning. Uh people can can grandstand, but but is that is that campaigning?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to the city attorney.
I I would, I mean, certain types of campaigning are not legal. But I think um maybe Councilmember Borjoli can write up what he's interested in, and we can um if if it's not something we can do, we can have a conversation.
Oh, I see. Okay, so, okay, then, yeah, really, you have you have the right to 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 submit it. So uh you will you will write up a brief paragraph and submit that to the council, uh to the city manager. Okay, very good. Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I I I don't know where how to best bring them back or address them, but but uh one topic that really uh uh impacts more and more residents uh is that they lose, they they get their home insurance is canceled. Property insurances by, for whatever reasons, and 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 somehow we need to come up with an answer of of what can those people, residents do, right, that run into those situations and and and
Is this related to flooding?
No, it's just a uh I'm choosing example, State Farm, all of a sudden sends you a letter, we're ending your insurance uh by beginning of July because you have a tree hanging over your house. And and for whatever reason, they can do that, and 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 more and more insurance companies are leaving California, right, because of fires and 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 we have fewer and fewer choices and or they become more expensive. I don't know what the right answer is. Uh I I'm not one in that situation, thankfully, but I hear it more often. And and I think we need to have some sort of an answer, advise something.
Yeah, so I think in this particular case, it's, I think you know, it's not something we have jurisdiction over. However, what we might be able to do is help with resources when this does happen. So um I'd be happy to look into it.
Maybe have a public meeting or something to, I I I truly think you know, we have that in the past when we have P G N E issues and others um or or despite some issues, right, that that a lot of people are upset. I think that's the same category. We need to address it somehow. It's the right people attending and uh and and giving it away. And the other thing I that really concerns me more and more is, I also don't know how where it fits in, but uh the topic of, and I think it it leads to to us wanting to have a healthier Morgan Hill, right? We talked about that in in our goal setting. Uh but part of it, I I feel more and more people in our community feel lonely. It it got really bad during the covid time, but I think it hasn't recovered. I I I I'm sensitive enough to feel that and see that. And I don't know what to do to to help people to get out of that mode, and I think we with some creative thinking, we, and again, it might be a resource issue as well, we can address this and and uh if we don't do anything, it will not end well, and 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 our suicide rates and others will go up again drastically. I I think it is an issue. We're closing our eyes and we should not. I think we need to address it.
Yeah, okay, very good. For being that other, we will move on to the next item, which is closed session. Uh now, would you uh read the closed session into the record?
Yes.
Maybe. On the council, we adjourn the closed session on two items, versus a conference of legal counsel existing litigation under government code section five four nine five six point nine, the city of Morgan Hill versus Rocky and Glenda Garcia, Santa Clara County case number twenty one, C D thirty eight fifty five twenty four. And then another is the conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant imposer exposure to litigation under five four nine five six point nine sub B, one case involving Ten South Development.
Very good. Michelle, any public comment?
No.
Very good. We'll close with a comment, and we will now adjourn to closed session.
Any for you?
Yes.